Does she know we don't have?
Yes, this one's first.
Yes, I understand. We lost our screen.
No, you're all right.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, we have two agenda items. The first is consideration of a resolution in support of a grant application and match with the NC Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, followed by the discussion of the remaining portions of our fiscal year 2526 budget. So, we'll begin with the grant application. Catherine, I turn this to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your consideration of an item that's not directly on the budget first thing this morning at this meeting. We do have a time sensitivity. We would like to be able to apply for the PARTF grant in the amount of $500,000 to continue our process towards a recreation center. So, this is just the initial stage that gives your approval for us to apply. It is a match required, so it's 500,000 to receive 500,000. But if we pursue the recreation center, we will easily need every bit of that. So, it does still give you the opportunity that if the decision is a no-go or changes in the recreation center project, there is still time. We do not have to accept it if we were to receive it. But I strongly encourage that we should at least apply and make every effort we can to be in consideration for the PARTF grant.
So, this money goes toward, if we get it, goes toward the development and research for a new rec center, not for improvements on the old rec center?
It was broad enough that it could be for anything we need to further our recreation center. It doesn't determine which type of building to pursue. It could be the design, the next steps on engineering and architect, as well as construction.
Hundred percent return on your money is very hard to pass up, ever.
There's no encumbrances on it, that this is no strings attached?
It's a hundred percent match. So, if we received 500, we would have to contribute 500 towards this project.
Which hypothetically, if we decide to move forward, it's money we're going to spend anyway.
Correct.
So, do we need to read the resolution into the minutes? Has everyone had a chance to read this?
I'll make a motion.
Not. Bob, I haven't seen.
What's that?
Everyone has had a chance to read this? Okay. Excellent.
Are we good? I make a motion to approve the resolution in support of an application match NC Parks and Rec Trust Fund grant, Oak Island Recreation Center project.
Second.
Call in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Council. And Catherine, back to you, discussion of the budget.
Great, thank you very much. We will continue our discussion with Development Services this morning. You have the agenda in front of you for the day. We have Develop... It's not in the way I presented it, okay? Development Services is first, and then we're going to have Matt's portion of the Stormwater Fund. You'll recall, we discussed the maintenance side with Scott during the public works part of Stormwater. And then we'll move into the Police Department, perhaps take a break, and then finalize with the Fire Department this afternoon. Sound good? All right, with that, I will start with Matt to present his goals and objectives.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council and Madam Mayor. We've developed quite a few goals for next fiscal year 2526 and tried our best to relate them to the draft strategic plan objectives. The first goal relates to a couple of objectives, which is improving pedestrian and traffic safety, land use compatibility, and balancing preservation and enhancement of commercial areas with new development opportunities. Some objectives straight from the strategic plan. As you know, we're in the short rows of updating our comprehensive land use plan, anticipating the timeline of September, October for presenting to Council for adoption on that. So, we thought it was a good time to capture some of those potential action items within our goals and objectives for the next year. So, completing, and it's broken down into two things because they're basically related to pedestrian safety and traffic safety and land use compatibility and commercial to residential development opportunities. So, our goal related to that is the comprehensive land use plan will have the action items broken down into short, medium, and long term. And since this is a one-year action plan, goal and objective, we did want to focus on trying to knock out some of those short-term action items within the next year. So, focusing on at least two short-term action items from pedestrian and traffic safety, as well as two for land use compatibility and commercial to residential development opportunities. So, focusing on those. Those are kind of internal processes, so there's not really any budgetary consideration for that, but it is something that we wanted to present as a focus for especially the planning side of Development Services over the next year. Moving on, and I'll apologize, this is Stormwater and Development Services are a little, all the goals are kind of merged together, goals and objectives. So, number two, as you know, the Stormwater Division manages our tree and vegetation program. We've had a good campaign over the last couple of years of planting trees in public spaces. We thank Council certainly for approving funds to do that. Our goal for the next year is to maintain those public trees. So, in the first couple of years after you plant a tree in a public space, it does take some concerted watering and maintenance. So, we want to try to achieve a 90% survival rate for those trees in public spaces that we've planted over the last couple of years because that enhances that tree canopy. As that tree grows and develops and maintains a healthy rate of growth, it does enhance that tree canopy. So, there is funding included in the budget to continue to water those plant, those trees in public spaces. And in addition, there is funding in the recommended budget for additional plantings over the next year, but the bulk of the cost is in the maintenance of the trees that we've planted over the last couple of years. So, focusing in on that will be a priority for us going forward.
Are we having luck on getting volunteers to help water?
Yeah, our Stormwater Administrator is working closely with the EAC to put together a plan to do just that, enlist volunteers to assist us in watering, which can certainly reduce the cost if we have folks that are willing to get out there and water some trees because it is a lot of mobilization yet for, to do it. You typically have to have a pretty, pretty large container, tank truck to go through, you know, especially if you're going to hit several in one day, several hundred thousand gallons, or several thousand gallons, anyway. But yeah, we're working on that diligently to try to get that in place to help reduce that cost.
Matt, can you go back for a moment to 1.2? I'm just curious, what are the short-term items that you're working on there?
That's a great question. The action items are currently in development, so we don't have a specific action item.
You're anticipating?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. We've heard a lot about land use compatibility, commercial to residential development opportunities throughout the process, so I anticipate that we will certainly have some goals associated.
Curious about the ratio. The second part of the sentence, the ratio, commercial to residential.
Absolutely. And that's something that we've asked the consultant to be looking at throughout this process to assist us because, you know, every town's going to be a little bit different. You know, what's the right one for the town of Oak Island? It's kind of an outstanding question that we're looking at.
Fair enough. I'll mark that TBD then, right? Still in development.
So, we've typically used the 80/20 ratio, and we've asked them to look at that and see if that is appropriate and applicable to Oak Island.
That's generally the gold standard, yeah. Okay, so it's TBD, that's really my question.
So, this may or may not result in zoning changes for next year for the commercial residential areas?
Well, like I said, these action items are currently in development, so I can't really, I don't want to jump the gun and say yes or no on something like that until we drill down into the final plan document, so, yes, sir.
So, I'd also like for us to consider the ratio of commercial to residential is one thing. I think, and I would encourage just Matt, to be a little more specific about what that 20 would consist of.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so there's commercial and there's commercial. And if we're looking at long-term viability and sustainability of the town's coffers, then the type of commercial development that we would bring in.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I'd like for us to also consider is to think regionally, right? So, we have done this to some extent with the land use plan in some areas, for instance, and with the recreation project, the feasibility study, but we really haven't addressed anything related to commercial for finding those niches so that we're not continuing to replicate, not that I have anything against them, but the storage units and the fast food and the, right? So, I'm hoping that we can think regionally and then act locally in terms of, we're not replicating, but we have things that truly will draw traffic to Oak Island, in which case everyone benefits.
Yes, ma'am, a hundred percent. And that's why in these goals and objectives, I'm tying them back to the comprehensive land use plan so we can, that work, those, you know, considerations that you're talking about are things to be reflected in the comprehensive land use plan. So, you know, once again, just, we want to make sure that we're focusing on implementing those short-term action items in the next year after adoption so that we're, you know, we have goals, specific goals that we're working towards to make sure that we hit those targets going forward.
Is there something that we have as a steering committee we haven't addressed specifically? So, if you'd kind of keep an eye on that, I think it would be helpful.
Happy to do so. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I think part of that would come in conjunction with the economic development plan. Those two will have to, the development and economic development are going to have to work together.
Exactly.
To get those things that we want to have here.
And I'd say Hallie's been great about providing input and reviewing all of our draft materials for the comprehensive land use plan, just to make sure that we're in alignment in that way, yes, ma'am.
Well, and I'm hopeful regarding 1.2 is that the effort results in something that can be communicated broadly. Like last year, we had the challenge where a business owner didn't have adequate parking, and so there was parking located behind the business, but it was zoned residential, and so we had to make that correction. I have a feeling there's going to be a couple more spots like that in our commercial corridor area where businesses don't have adequate parking available, whether it's a zoning issue, or a property ownership issue, or improvement issue, whatever the case may be. So, I hope that what comes out of this effort is a more definitive structure. Here's the commercial corridor. This is what it should look like, and it should be something that enables commercial development to consume those properties in a more efficient and user-friendly way, and even in a safer way. Pedestrian safety, parking safety, traffic safety, all of those come into play. And to Councilmember Carter's point, that should all be related to some sort of economic development initiative where we want to encourage, you know, commercial development and make it easier for the corridor to be utilized and consumed in that manner. The more we, we talk about commercial versus residential, but the more we restrict the commercial area, you're not, it's harder to attract those businesses to want to operate here because there are restrictions on them, right? So, I'm hoping that that's part of the action items, is we're going to look at what the future corridor looks like, right? We've got the grant program for beautification, which is a good start, but we need to go, like, 10, 20 years into the future with a definition, and then we need to be able to communicate that, right? I think John always goes back to, we come up with great ideas, we struggle with how we communicate that to the community. And in this example, it would be the business community, right? How do we communicate that to them and promote that so we attract that? And then on your second, well, no, yeah, 2.1, my recommendation would be to maybe change the wording a little bit. You say 90% survival for existing trees. There are lots of trees in our public spaces that are aging, aging out. And so, maybe your, maybe your goal is the survival rate of the new, the new plantings, right?
Absolutely.
And maybe establish some sort of, like, new plant, you know, trees planted within the last two years or three years, right? Because I don't think we're going to continue this initiative where we're constantly planting trees. At some point, we're going to say, we don't have any more space. We've planted trees everywhere possible, right? And so, maybe limit your scope there. Because I don't want you to, I don't want someone to say, well, Matt said he was going to protect 90% of the trees, and then a tree dies and it has to come down, and then people will be like, well, that goes against his, his goal. We don't want to do that, right?
That's a good point, thank you.
Are we in the 90% rate for the new trees we planted?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they've all survived. The first, the ones that we just planted, they've all survived, and the ones that we planted the last, the fiscal year before have all survived, so doing good so far. A couple other goals and objectives for the department going forward. Three is to provide and accommodate customer service and enhance the business-friendly ecosystem. One thing that's a challenge for, for people in dealing with Development Services is a lot of times permit review time. So, our target for the next year is going to be average review time of 12 calendar days for permit applications. Now, the, the state requires for building permits for a response within 15 days, so we're trying to be better than what the, the state mandated review time is in that regard. And this is, once again, an internal adjustment. We're already strategizing around ways to improve our permit review and application processes in order to do that, but it is something that we, we want to focus on in the next year going forward to try to hit that target.
Current would be average review time?
For building permits, we do hit that 15-day calendar mark.
Looking up from 15 to 12.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Has Development Services fully migrated to the new, new software? Like, you guys are on the new stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that, is that helping? Is there efficiencies in that technology that's helping achieve this or not?
Yeah, so, I've spent the last few months, right, digging into the software and some of the functionality that's in there, and finding that there are some underutilized functions that could help us improve efficiency going forward. So, right now, what I'm doing as a part of this is putting together a plan to roll out some of those efficiencies that we haven't quite grabbed since it's been rolled, rolled out. You know, anytime you adopt a new software, there's going to be growing pains for the first few months, so as far as the internal workings, it is working for us, but there are some things out there that we could, we could be using in the, in the system that will help us out even more going forward. So, just putting our heads together downstairs and figuring out how, how that should work and the best way to make it work going forward.
Hopefully, the new software has the alerting function, like, pretty much in now modern day times. If every software vendor, if they haven't implemented a learning and notification within their tools, then they're no longer a modern software company. So, hopefully...
That's actually the part that I just figured out yesterday.
Excellent.
That's the whole online capability is what, one of the benefits of that software that we've struggled with the most. It's still not up and running where we want it to be.
And we did, I did, just, the last few weeks, I have been focusing on, on the notification aspect of it, and just with the, with the help of the admins people, they've been good about taking my calls and helping me figure things out. Have gotten that squared away, so now it's a, just an internal process of who gets notified for what and how those notifications work going forward. But I think we've got it nailed down and figured out, yes, sir.
Good.
Our last goal and objective for Development Services does relate to Stormwater, the Stormwater Administration side of things, so preserving waterways and promoting environmental health. And what we're focusing on is 100% compliance with our MS4 Stormwater Permit. So, and I say year one because we've had Stormwater Permits in the past, but July 1 is the start of our, our next MS4 permit. And for those who don't know, MS4 is the municipal storm, separate storm sewer system program, which allows us to operate and maintain our, our Stormwater System here in the town. Once you become a census designated urbanized area, you're required to get an MS4 permit in order to maintain your, and operate your Stormwater System. In the past, and you'll see this when we get to, you know, how these break down into our, our, our measures, our last compliance visit from DEQ was not good. We're basically not in compliance with the, with the MS4 permit. So, our Stormwater Administrator has done a great job of, one, getting our permit updated for the next cycle, but two, identifying those items that would, that we need to work on in order to maintain that compliance level within the town. And a lot of it's tracking, you know, so it's keeping, keeping track of all the calls we get for illicit discharge violations, a lot of it's tracking our public education stuff, so it is kind of an administrative procedure. But when we broke all those items down, it looked to be about 2,000 hours annually of work, which is a position. So, you will see in the Stormwater Budget, a request for a third Stormwater Administrative Position. In order to do that, I've broken down their current workload, and they're doing, in the last fiscal year alone, they've done over 1,500 inspections between the two positions, as well as several hundred plan reviews. So, when you add 2,000 hours of work to already, you know, full workload in order to maintain that compliance, it does turn out to be a third position for that department. And so, the MS4 is an important one because we're required to do it, but also it lets us, it helps the community because you can come get a Stormwater Permit from the town. You don't have to go to DEQ and talk to somebody in the state agency about Stormwater permitting and questions, that, that all comes internally, similar to the CAMA LPO program. So, it, it does have plenty of benefits for the citizenry as well, where you're not, you know, waiting on somebody from Wilmington to come visit.
Does it require a Stormwater Permit?
For the home construction, yes, sir. If you're, if you're adding impervious surfaces beyond a certain amount, yes, we're looking at a Stormwater Permit for it.
So, Matt, being, being out of compliance in the last one, is that, that's the first we've heard about that. Is this like a, an outlier where the previous years, we've been in compliance every year, and then last year was an outlier? Or is it more of a, we've been consistently out of compliance?
So, our last, our last visit was, I believe, a couple of years ago, actually, so we haven't had a visit since the, the last one. I will say that we were not the only jurisdiction that received a negative report on their MS4 activities, so it does seem like the state's focusing on ensuring compliance with that. I can't really speak to previous year's reviews or anything like that at this time, but it does seem like something that, there are some penalties. You know, you can lose your permit, you can get, the town can get fined for non-compliance with MS4, so it is, you know, something we should be focusing on, frankly.
So, why, why do you think, other than manpower, is there any other, any other underlying reasons why we failed our...
I do think, so it's, you know, from my understanding, it's a couple of things. It's organizing the work, like I said. Our Stormwater, our current Stormwater Administrator basically had to build from scratch a spreadsheet of all the activities that we're supposed to be doing under our permit and lay out the hours and the times associated with that. But then it is also mainly related to manpower because when you're, when you're having that level of inspection and plan review work, and then to add on, you know, a couple thousand hours of tracking and administrative work, it's just not, it's not feasible for someone to, for one person to be able to handle that.
So, just, I want to pursue, if I may.
Yeah, I just want to just wrap this up. So, is this a one-off request to catch up? Because if that is, then the contractor seems to be the right solution as opposed to hiring yet one more staff.
Well, we have, the MS4 permit requires some of these activities to be done weekly, daily, quarterly, annually, and it depends on the, the activity, how often you have to do it. So, it, it is something that we have to keep up with in perpetuity, basically. That's, that's why a position would make more sense than a, a third party to, it's not like they can come in and just help us year one, and then we're, we're good for the next five years. We have to keep up with these, these tracking and these activities while the permit's valid and good.
So, just, because we talked about this the other day, and we, we agreed to invest more money in Stormwater, but what you're saying is disturbing. So, when was the last inspection that we failed?
I believe it was two years ago, yes, sir.
Pardon?
I believe it was two years ago, yes, sir.
Two years ago. How far out of compliance are we? 10%, 20%, totally out?
Yeah, so they, they look at it basically, when we get a report back, it's, are you in compliance or are you not?
Yes or no?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, full or nothing?
Yeah, that's right.
And is there a remedial response that we're allowed?
Yeah, so they, they identified, you know, areas that we needed to improve. There was no immediate penalty associated with, with being out of compliance at this time.
What's the timeframe to come back into compliance?
So, since we start a new permit, we'll be starting basically fresh from scratch July 1, when the new permit comes into, comes into effect.
I would assume if the state is...
And so, we have that first year, you know, to...
But I would assume if the states can wake up there, they would be down to evaluate us again, having been out of compliance, right? We know they're coming.
100%, yes, sir.
Pretty good that they are. And you're estimating several thousand hours of administrative time to come into compliance?
Yeah, Bryce did a great breakdown of the activities and the estimated times that it would take to, to complete those activities, and he landed right around 2,200 hours of manpower work in order to keep track of those, especially in the first year, whereas in some of these activities, it'll be the first year that we've, we've done it, you know, because you have to, not only do you have to do the tracking, you have to create the methodology to track.
I'm going to leave aside the question why we weren't in compliance and someone failed to follow through. Leaving that aside, there is a choice, and I think, I don't want to put words in Councilman Schule's mouth, but you can either add manpower or redirect current manpower to come into compliance. I mean, there's a choice here, right? Yes, we don't, we have to come into compliance or forfeit the pit, permit, right?
Yeah.
But what you said was 2,000 or 2,200 hours at 40 hours a week, that's 50 weeks worth of work. That's an entire year's work for one person to do.
It's one FTE.
Yeah.
2,080 is one FTE, so.
2,080 is enough.
And if I understood your assessment, you have evaluated the current two employees we have, and they're maxed out.
Yes.
So, if you take one of those people away from what they're doing, then that doubles the workload for a one-year.
Yeah, 100% yes, ma'am. One of our, our current Stormwater Inspector did more inspections than any other member of the Development Services in the last fiscal year, so the workload is tremendous.
And they have the tree requirements now on top of them as well. So, they have a lot, they're very busy.
Well, the tree mandate is an unfunded mandate in some respects.
And now, we're going to have to fund it.
We now have to fund it.
So, the one FTE for one year gets us in compliance, then what does that one FTE do? I'm assuming monitoring and reporting isn't a full-time job.
It is, that's the 2,000 hours that we identified.
Every year.
Yes, sir.
Just to keep up with the permits that are coming in as well. And, and as a side note, we looked very hard at all... And, and as a side note, we looked very hard at all of the departments' requests. And I think to Bob's point as well, when there's a need for maintaining the service level or in this case, improving the service level so that we meet state requirements, and it's an ongoing, that's the only time we would recommend considering a full-time position addition. The smart financial perspective is when it is a one-time project or when it is bringing in a higher level of expertise or a third party. That is absolutely financially important that you look at that from a bringing an outside contractor. That's the consultant. That is money smartly spent as opposed to bringing into a full-time FTE. So you don't end up with exactly what you said. We, we did the project and then we've got a person in place. You don't hire and fire like that. That would be unfair to the person. So we utilize consultants and contractors appropriately when it's not a long-term thing. In this case, we are recommending a full-time FTE as opposed to a consultant because it is anticipated that this is a very long-term, consistent need.
The permits run for five years. So we'll have to continue that tracking. And as I mentioned, it's where, since the, since this bureau designates Oak Island as an urbanized area, we're required to have an MS4 permit to operate a stormwater system here in the town, so.
So in your opening comments on day one, this is an ad that's not in a balanced budget, is that correct? You said no, no tax increase.
You're correct. This still does not affect your general fund tax increase. This is for the stormwater fund, which is funded by the $7 a month fee that on opening day we did discuss. That would be recommended to have a fee increase in the stormwater fund.
So this is tied to the fee increase for stormwater?
Does not affect the tax rate we discussed. Yes.
So if we, and I like to always look through the windshield, not through the rearview mirror, but if we knew two years ago we were not in compliance, I don't believe we had a request last year's budget hearing for additional staff.
Yeah, and part of that was basically due to the organization that we needed to do. We knew the permit update was coming July 1 of this year. We also knew that with the, the changeover of personnel in the stormwater department, that there would need to be some time spent organizing our work, you know, getting our permit approved, looking at the activities that the permit, because it is, it is technically a whole new permit July 1. So that, I would anticipate that's why in the last year you didn't see a request for one.
So if we, is it an option to use a contractor for this budget cycle to catch up? And then look at a new FTE in next year's budget cycle?
I, I'd have to investigate whether there's contractors out there that do this sort of tracking and reporting work for us, but...
I think it's a different type of, of work product that we're looking for. That would somebody would need to be here all day, every day reviewing permits. And that might be more difficult. This is one place that I would recommend a full-time position.
Matt, I have, I have a question that's a little bit as a sidetrack. But I think in our roles and responsibilities for the EAC, we talk about their responsibility for helping the town maintain its Tree City status and its stormwater permit. What do they actually do to help, help you?
Yeah, so we are required as part of this MS4 permit to have a, it requires you to have a stormwater, like, committee type set up. And that's what the EAC does. And they're basically, their, their role is similar to, similar but different to something like a planning board is like an advisory board. If there's a, a stormwater, you know, policy or recommendation or something like that, that needs, that they see a need to advance, then, then it would come out of that group. They also help with education. We're required to do, under the MS4 permit, we're required to do certain educational activities. And they've certainly helped Bryce out with, with organizing and staffing some of those as well. So that, that's kind of the two main roles of that stormwater committee is recommendation and education.
Saturday's Arbor Day is part of that committee that they have to do.
Absolutely.
Just since we're talking about stormwater and positions in Scott's budget on the stormwater maintenance team, they had also requested additional positions. Because if we, we plan and we design stormwater improvements, the team that goes out and, and helps actually do that work and then maintains the ditches, which is also a component of our permit that we're required to maintain, those, that group also is looking for additional positions. And you heard that a little bit with Scott. I just want to remind you that this is, this is an awkward fund because it's in two different departments. But the sum of all those additional positions, whether it be under Scott or under Matt, is in the same one fund that we will be asking for a rate increase for.
So both of the FTEs would be potentially paid for by an increase in the stormwater?
All of them, yes sir.
A $1 increase, right?
$3.
We said it, we're still, you know, tweaking the numbers, but it, $2 to $3.
So back to what Bob, Bob said. That would provide payment salary for Scott's request and for Matt's request.
That is correct.
A stormwater increase. And neither one of them were allotted for in your initial budget.
In the general fund budget that affects the tax rate, that's correct.
So what would you say is the, what would be the impact of not bringing out anybody? I mean, how detrimental would this be?
We could, our stormwater permit can be revoked and then we'd lose the ability to have and maintain a town stormwater system. In addition, the, the fines are pretty hefty. They're up to $40,000 for fining a day for stormwater permitting, if it rises to that level.
I think we saw this year a really good example of the need of stormwater enhancement in this community.
TC8.
Absolutely. That was a one-time storm itself, but I, I think we've seen the cumulative effects of stormwater.
I think what we're confronted with here is past failures to really see what we needed on a long-term basis. Let's just speak the truth here. We missed the vote. Now that we see the problem and we know it's not annualized, it's ongoing, right? We need to pay for it one way or the other, right? We need a full-time position to maintain the stormwater system. We live on an island. We flood. So on and so forth. So that's part of why we're here, folks. I mean, you need to make difficult decisions. Can't avoid it much as we might like to. The manager is telling us that there's no other way to move the pieces on the chessboard, right? To get the manpower, then we need to add FTEs and we need to stay in compliance. From my point of view, otherwise, this is going to be a disaster.
I would agree. You're absolutely correct.
If I recall, 2022 budget was when we introduced stormwater fees, if I recall.
Sounds about right.
We called it Rick.
Patterson. With Rick.
And we created stormwater fees. I think it was 2022 budget year. And so I asked in that budget cycle, in, in exchange for approving the stormwater fee addition to the water bill for an annual ongoing report, specifically what these stormwater fees are paying for. Not just adding people, but what are the projects that are being funded and completed and how it benefits taxpayers? Even though it's a fee-based, you know, initiative, it's not in the, in the tax rate, it is still considered an added expense and it was a new expense in 2022. I don't recall in any budget workshop from that, from 2023 forward of ever receiving that report. And I'm not blaming staff for it. We all get really busy and we get sidetracked and things fall through the cracks. So it would be nice, not necessarily before we close out the workshops, but maybe before we vote on the budget, to see some, maybe not detail, but high-level historical record of, this is the fee we charged in 2022. We accomplished these things. Here's 2023. I don't think, trying to recall if we've increased the rate since 2022. I think we have not. So we've gone three years at a consistent fee. So what does that three, what did we accomplish in three years with the fee? And then we clearly understand today that if we approve a, a $3 increase to stormwater fees, it's going to cover an FTE. We're out of compliance. There's, there's a lot of moving parts here that we need to catch up on and fall in line with the state. And I think we understand that. So it would just be nice to see kind of that historical value, right?
Happy to put that together for you.
If that's not too much to ask for.
I think that's first we're here and that we will certainly get that taken care of.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm not blaming, I'm not saying staff has not done the job. I'm just saying, that's one request that has just seemed to fall through the cracks from year to year.
One thing, and one thing that us focusing on, you know, tracking these MS4 activities certainly, you know, can help feed into that report, that annual report going forward as well. Absolutely.
Yeah, and it would be especially helpful, like, if you call out, well, hey, we, we did all this extra work and we didn't increase fees. So we've gone three years with no fee increase, but look at what we've, we've had to do up and beyond what we thought this original fee was going to cover. Here's, here's stuff that we've had to do that, you know, was a burden, right? An unfavorable budget item, right?
Before we leave this, is the $3 increase tentative? Is that, is that a projection? It could be more.
I think that's worst-case scenario.
That's worst-case, okay.
Yes, sir.
Just because we're starting to settle on that number and I want to make sure that's a hard number that you have.
We are still, you know, tweaking.
You had inferred earlier two or three.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we started in January, if you'll recall, trying to give you a good estimate. At that time, every month, we continued to refine it. After these discussions, we'll continue to refine it. We're pretty confident that that would be worst-case scenario, if that helps.
Let's take out a crystal ball for a moment if we could. So, you know, potentially increasing with two FTEs. Is that like a, we're drawing a line in the sand. That's it, that's sufficient? Or might we need another one next year, another one?
I hate to hesitate to take, but Scott's request was four, plus Matt's would be a total of five. I don't know that we can get to five with the $2 to $3 range, but I don't want you to misinterpret two anywhere. Isn't that right?
Did you say a while ago, Matt's one-person increase and Scott's one-person increase would be taken?
Scott's was four.
Scott's four would be taken up with the $3 fee increase?
Probably not all four, but it would be more than one. So it's somewhere in there. If I had to guess right now, you could do it with a $2 to $3 increase with Matt's position and two for Scott.
Back to something that John alludes to constantly on, on getting the message out the right way. Still, the resident on 66th Street or 43rd Street or wherever is still going to say, I'm paying all this stormwater fee. I have water standing in my front yard. I understand the fact that, golly, we might need a fee because we need to be MS compliant. And I understand that, but the person who has water standing in their front yard needs to, needs to be told where their stormwater fee, how they at their particular house is benefiting from that, just like garbage collection. I don't ever put my garbage out because my house is empty, but I have to pay that every month. And they ask that question.
Right, no, no, thank you. We'll help the communication of that. Because to be very clear, I don't want to speak for Matt, but this type of position is a required review.
I understand.
That doesn't have anything to do with cleaning up your stormwater necessarily, standing water. If he's got to review every new house request or impervious surface request that comes through, that's a whole different...
But when that person sees a $10 fee instead of a $7 fee, they're going to say, I still have not received anything from this.
If I could just clarify without, without Scott being here, there's a couple of things. So, so Matt...
You're going to have to stop, come...
Thank you.
Yep. Lisa was yelling at me.
With, so, so Matt's request is, is aimed at compliance with the stormwater permit. What you're referring to really is more the maintenance activities that are ongoing throughout the year. Also, what's really important is the stormwater master plan, which is going to help us identify where our priorities are to then invest in those capital projects that will make those long-term impacts. Scott's request specifically, he currently has a crew of five. They kind of work north to south and west to east and, and that's how they work. But it takes them an inordinately long time to complete their circuit of stormwater maintenance because they're constantly pulled off doing one thing or another. So what Scott has requested is enough personnel to actually have two crews. One that would focus primarily on maintaining those ditches and driveways and all those things where we have problems, but also to be able to go address the things that happen when we get 20 inches of rain and all those things. So it's really kind of a combined effort. The stormwater master plan is going to kind of help us determine the capital investments that we need to, to long-term manage the stormwater and then also manage the day-to-day maintenance. But that's what Scott's request is for the additional personnel.
To bring it full circle then. Matt's request is, I need help on MS compliance. Scott's request is, I need help on maintaining people's front yard problems.
Correct. And, and just, if you just put it functionally in the organization to help describe it, if you think about what Development Services does, they do plan review and inspections and construction-related activities, okay? That's what Bryce and, and that portion of Matt's portion of it is, is directly involved with is plan review, permitting and construction-related inspections. The public works side is exactly what Public Works does out, maintaining streets, maintaining everything else. They're maintaining the town's stormwater devices that keep water out of people's front yards.
And they're not able to keep every person, every time happy because they're shorthanded.
They just don't have enough people.
Yeah, you'd be looking at more than $2 to $3. You want that level of completion.
And also keep in mind, when we say maintenance, stormwater maintenance, it's a little more challenging for us, in my point of view, because our stormwater mitigation within the town limits is a ditch. And that ditch consists of primarily sand. And sand likes to do its own thing, right? It'll, it'll gravitate to the space of least resistance. And so I will say that at least along West Yacht Drive, I have seen an increased activity from Scott's group in trying to do more maintenance than they have, you know, six, seven years ago. And so, but it is a constant battle, right? They could, they could make a ditch, they could grade a ditch perfectly today and three weeks from now, heavy rains or whatever circumstances are, that ditch is no longer performing as it did when they graded it. So, you know, some patience has to be recognized. And just continuing to add people, at some point, you know, you'd literally have to have a, a resource assigned to almost every block in the town limits to, to keep a ditch graded properly, right?
That's a great observation. I would just add that part of that request, so currently, the culverts, the driveways, so you have your drainage ditches and a culvert that allows a driveway, we're not actively maintaining those. It's kind of a resident responsibility, which they're not doing. It's in the right of way. It's our device. And so part of this request is to have sufficient personnel to begin to maintain those. And so specifically on yacht, that's where you're really going to see it. Dolphin, pelican, same thing.
And I believe at one point Scott had mentioned that he was waiting for or was planning to order some sort of asset to help with the, it was supposed to expedite culvert cleaning, some kind of jet.
It's a jet truck.
Yeah, so I don't know if we were able to acquire that. I know supply and demand had made it difficult to get our hands on certain assets just because they're not available. So if we haven't been able to acquire that, are we still looking for, for that? And, and was it in our capital budget to go out and acquire that device? Or has that now gone to the wayside? Like, where are we with that?
It is not currently included. What we currently have is a pull behind device, which is okay. A dedicated jet truck, which is a quarter of a million dollars, is not currently requested.
Okay.
But that would greatly improve our ability to, to do exactly that.
Because sometimes we have expectations. Because sometimes we have expectations, but then we don't give people the right tool for the job, right? You know, we're like, dig this hole, but here's a shovel when they need a backhoe, right? And so this could be a situation where maybe we would see tremendous improvement in stormwater if, if we had a better tool to, to accelerate getting these culverts, you know, cleaned out. So, okay, thanks for that update.
We'll look into that.
So Andy, before you go away, hopefully we're looking at DEQ grants that would help us perhaps with the purchase of a jet truck and?
I don't know that that's the case. I haven't really thought about that in terms of capital outlay. We have thought about it for capital projects and been pretty successful. The Gold Leaf money.
The Gold Leaf money, right.
Our grid infiltration systems, not really thought about it in terms of procurement of.
They have stormwater grants continuously.
Matt and I talked about that a little bit in the last few days.
Yes, I would encourage us to seize every opportunity we have. If this is something that's going to improve service and give us more efficiency with the staffing capacity we have, then I would highly encourage us to just keep pushing for the grant sources to get there.
Absolutely.
Please, thank you.
In recent, I think, I'm sorry. So one, the one FTE, the note I made, that Scott requested they staff a facilities tech.
Totally different. That was in his facilities section that falls in the general fund that is not a part of stormwater. In his stormwater request, he had asked for two crews of two. And we didn't talk about it much because it's not in the current budget, but would be requested if you all were amenable to a rate increase. Could not get there without a rate increase. And then if you're, we're listening to everything that you say in these conversations and we'll take that feedback back and it sounds like you would like us to pursue that, we'll see how many additional crews or perhaps additional capital were able to get within that dollar increase range. Does that help?
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
You got it, you got it.
What the mayor alluded to, every time we run into one of these situations, we are looking at every available grant imaginable everywhere, hopefully. I'd hate to leave something on the table if it's available. And I'm sure you all are.
The other opportunities that we've requested and have now, Catherine and Florence, they have reinforced our request of the, through our representatives, the General Assembly, a two and a half million dollar assistance, I won't categorize it, but assistance with, to help us develop a stormwater management plan, which was post PTC eight. That was the very first question that Senator Raybon asked is, do we have a stormwater master plan? And of course, we don't. But then there is additional monies within that ask of two and a half million that would help us tremendously, not only in helping to execute that plan, which could include capital equipment. So that, that ask is on the table and has been reinforced and will continue to be reinforced. We're really not asking them for much since assistance with the beach. And the scheme of things, two and a half million is not a lot of money in the state's budget, but we'll just continue to push on that.
Two and a half million would go a long way towards our dilemmas.
Stormwater.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, this is basically a reiteration of the last couple of slides. You know, the Development Services goals for the next year are related directly to some of our strategic plan objectives, including land use compatibility, pedestrian traffic and safety, tree canopy preservation, improving customer service and promoting environmental health. Just a reiteration of some of the measures we have right there, as well as the results that we'll be tracking through the next, next year. So is there any questions or anything about any of these performance measures or our goals for the next year that we haven't covered yet so far? If not.
Five-year history is in front of you. Matt's budget is in two separate sections, 10-540 and 10-541. I'll, I'll answer your question before somebody asks it because there are a lot of significant increases or decreases and most of those are because of the split. We split it into 541 and 540, so some of that is just a cleanup. But I'll turn it over to Helen to help walk through and Matt's here to answer any questions on the numbers.
Before Helen walks us through, contracted services has jumped around a whole bunch. Fifteen thousand in '23, asked for 135 and spent 178 in '24. Is what all this contract services?
Are you in 540?
One, 541, 61.
541?
Yeah.
Let us get that.
Oh, you're fine.
You're okay. So, and I can answer some of this. So 2021 and 2022, this 541 budget did not exist. Everything was captured under 540. That, that was, with Development Services, building inspections and planning was all budgeted, that's one thing. So that's where you see the, the 2023, that's the first year that there was actually a 541 budget. The, the requests were fairly low that year as a new, as that was a new division. 2024, where it was 135, that was the year that we budgeted for the comprehensive land use plant, which is currently ongoing. So then 2025, we didn't have that, that budgetary need there. So contracted services for the last year was basically any grants that we had identified that would need a local match. We, we did, we needed a new plotter, so we leased a plotter that came out of contracted services. Our GIS system is, comes out of contracted services as well. So that's why you saw that, that major decrease over the two years. This year, the change is largely related to a Little Davis Canal dredge feasibility. So you, you had a presentation from some concerned citizens about the state of the Little Davis Canal. We requested a, a budget of $70,000 to start that feasibility. We talked to a couple of, of agencies and feel like that's a, a good ballpark for a budget estimate in order to start that feasibility should council want to pursue that. We're happy to, to get that bid out.
So that money is allocated, it's still something that has to come back to council to authorize?
Over $50,000.
To award that contract.
Well, even before you go down that path, to move forward on a feasibility study.
If it's approved in the budget, we'll move forward.
Okay. I, that's something I think we, we'd want to have a discussion on.
Sure, absolutely.
Whether now or some other time.
So the, you know, the feasibility, it, we, we talked to a couple of different agencies about what it would look like to even start considering dredging that canal. And it does require quite a bit of study to look for environmental impacts, what type of dredging could even be completed in there, where the spoils would go, things like that. So the, the volume of that work would typically take six to eight months. And the $70,000 would basically get us started with what are even the options to dredge and what that permitting process would take like, would look like. It does require a major CAMA permit, which does kind of open it up to comment from state and federal agencies. And so part of that process would be having a, a very early scoping meeting with those agencies to try to go ahead and identify what comments might come out of it.
But this is not entirely to the Little Davis Canal, this is just that small area that those.
Yeah, not the, not the main Davis, no.
Small.
Little Davis Canal that has like 65 residents that back up to it.
And, and we were that clear with the folks that we reached out to that, you know, hey, we, we need a ballpark estimate to do a feasibility on, on that small section. And that was, this was the neighborhood it came back in.
Catherine, you and I had a little conversation about this. These folks have asked for a special tax district and they had suggested, I think amongst themselves, a $500 per property assessment annually. That's $30,000 and we're sitting here talking about a $70,000 feasibility study. The amount of money that they're talking about is just not going to cover anything.
And, and thank you for bringing that up. We, we have intended the June agenda to bring back that for your discussion because we obviously can't do that without council's authority to create that district. So that will be coming before you by June.
But like what Terry's alluding to, even if we were to agree to it, the money's not there unless the town throws it in.
Right, their, their assessment's not even going to pay for half of this estimated feasibility study. Much less any dredging work.
That's right, that's not the work itself, just for the study.
Yep, the rate would definitely have to be adjusted if they want to continue down that path. So there are two options here from the budgeting perspective. If this is a questionable project, we could take it out of the budget now, bring this back to you in steps. We come to the June agenda, have that open discussion. And then if it, it is pursued, we could come back to you with a budget amendment later in the fiscal year for a study or for other items moving forward, if it moves forward. So we have both options.
That group, when they came and talked to us, were hoping if, if they went forward, they would be able to get a grant to help them clean the Little Davis Canal. Possibly they need to look into a grant for a feasibility study also.
Might just take a little bit longer.
Yeah, the, the, the grant funding that they're leading to really depends on the, what type of work you're looking to do. So if it's, if it's tied to water quality or restoration or something like that, there, there's environmental grants available to it. If it's tied to navigability, if that's your main goal, there are some funds available for that, but they're, they're pretty competitive and they, they, from what I understand, when they're reviewed, they're looked, they're reviewed for, is this a benefit to the community as a whole? So in this instance, a smaller one, we'd still be able to look into it and see if it was available, but it might be questionable, that's the shallow draft navigation fund. It's, you know, for a small, small piece. I can't really speak to the, how competitive we would be for a grant for a branch like the Little Davis Canal.
I'm, I'm comfortable leaving it out for now, addressing it in June if, if it can go forward in June or not go forward.
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
That's one of those important things we wanted to bring on the table for discussion.
And the $500 a month is low, but you didn't have 100% dispatia rate. There were a number of homeowners within that 64.
Yeah, I think there were.
Who were not interested.
I think they maybe got 60 out of 65 or something. And it's because those folks' property actually abuts the big Davis Canal and so they don't have the navigation issues that people on the backside have.
Any questions on the 540? We kind of jumped right to 541, but I think this is not, not any large additional. There's no position requesting capital. Pretty much a status quo budget.
Matt, the two new positions that we approved last year, did those go into for nuisance abatement? Did those, were those in planning or were those in?
Those were in planning. The, the two zoning technicians is our, yeah, those are in 541, yes.
So how's that working with the workload? I mean, did that, did that help your productivity?
Yeah, absolutely, yes ma'am. Well, we've had, they've all been very active. Just a few months ago, finished up their six-month probation. The, everyone's doing a great job. And we've been able to, you know, especially with the Alliance Report and things like that, make sure that, that the workflows are happening well and that we're clearing out cases and making sure that everything's done. But the zoning techs also, you know, handle some of the plan review down in the, the planning office, as well as some of the inspections that happen out in the field. So they, they have a pretty broad range of activities that they have to go to. But the extra manpower certainly helps from a code enforcement standpoint because we can, you know, increase routine checks for things. You know, whereas before it was basically all they could do to keep up with, you know, new home inspections and things like that and, and plan reviews. So it's definitely helped out a lot in that regard.
Have we, have we investigated what it'll take to get our code enforcement system information, however you want to, whatever you want to call it, online that's available to the public to see what's going on with our code enforcement and?
Yeah, we, we have investigated that to, to some degree. We do have some, some limited options in our current permitting system and software because it handles code enforcement as well. So I, I think as we continue to examine our capabilities for online permitting and, and they, they basically have two systems for that and which one makes sense for us as the town. You know, once we roll that out, we can certainly continue to enhance with, with things like code enforcement as well, yes ma'am. It's certainly a topic that we've kind of discussed a lot as we've talked through these, these permitting processes and what, what admin or software can do and can't do.
There's some municipalities that they have fairly sophisticated systems. I don't know that we need anything that's that sophisticated, but when you have a, a problem property and neighbors keep saying, what's happening? Why isn't, why isn't it cleaned up? Why, you know, why, why, why? With these online systems, you're able to see every action that's been taken, every time the zoning officer went out there, inspected the property, where it is. And that sort of helps to, helps people to get acclimated to what the process is and how long it takes to go, you know, to go through the process. Just because you call it in today doesn't mean it's going to be cleaned up tomorrow.
Especially if, if it has to go through the courts.
Right.
The attorneys.
Matt, kudos to, I've seen some of the direct results of your team on enforcement. As we walk the dogs every morning, we go down different streets, we see a lot of those cease and desist for some things that are being built, that additions to homes that were not permitted in the first place. And.
Thanks.
Hopefully it's not pervasive, but thank you for at least protecting those that inadvertently may do harm to themselves.
Yeah, a lot of it is knowledge and education, kind of relating back to what Ms. Carter was saying is, you know, some, some people don't know what they need to do in the first place. And we're happy to help people and get them steered in the right direction when they don't know what to do. That's what we're here for, we're here to help folks out. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Prepared the graphs. Obviously Development Services is, is very personnel-heavy. That's what we need.
In planning and zoning.
This is 541 here.
No other questions on stormwater?
No, we've kind of done that too. I think that was all together.
Any more questions from Matt?
No.
How many people under your umbrella?
So we have eight in the Development Services, the 540. We also have eight in planning and zoning, which is 541. And we currently have two in stormwater as well. So 18 right now, would be 19 with the, with the new position under Bryce as well. And, and a great team, they're all, we've got the right folks downstairs to, to get the job done.
You do have a good team.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all that you do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Police chief is on the way.
He was here. It came his turn, he walked out.
We scared him.
I'll just grab him. Thank you.
Turn to 510.
10-5-10. Back to the general fund.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Hope everybody's doing well?
All right. Well, we'll start as we have with each of the other departments with his departmental goals and objectives in alignment with the strategic plan and his performance measures.
Okay. Okay. For our goals and objectives, we've got some that's directly tied to the budget and some that I would like to discuss that was some internal goals and objectives that, you know, we've also been working towards during this fiscal year. But our, our first one here is, of course, the, the most important one, in my opinion, is to ensure that our community remains safe. And the objectives were to maintain an adequate response time to our emergency calls. As we work through here and look at our performance measures, we'll look at, we'll look at the time for that. And, you know, I, I feel like we have a very good response time for a, a response call. I don't know how we would improve on that at this point, especially during the season when there is thousands and thousands of cars on the street and we're navigating through that. And so, but, uh, that is always a, the primary objective is to ensure that our community remains safe and we're working towards that. Maintain an above-average crime clearance rate. That looks at our property crimes, our personal crimes, and to ensure that we have a, an appropriate rate, looking at the national average and then comparing it to, comparing it to our town. And we'll see that in our performance measures here in just a second. And to reduce the overall number of traffic accidents, we've, we've remained consistent throughout the years with, or with, since I've been the chief, it's been fairly consistent with the number of traffic accidents. You know, one way to prevent that, well, let me back up. Parking lot accidents, I, I, that's just what it is. You know, when you have these bump, you know, folks back up and they, you know, they hit each other and those are very hard to deter. You know, however, having that officer presence on our streets and ensuring that we don't have those major fatality accidents, you know, of course, is a priority for us. Our staffing, and I know last year, last budget meeting, or last time we were together like this, you know, we talked about our staffing. Over this past year, our staffing has improved. I feel like right now we're stable. We have one police officer position that's open and, which is a great thing right now for us. So, you know, the staffing to be able, it's still a challenge. You know, we have, we have so many applicants that come in and want us to send, send them to the cadet program. And that's just a, that's a huge commitment on us as the town. And it's such a long period now. It's 900 hours. A two-year degree is like 1,500 hours. You know, BLET now is almost 900 hours. So that's an incredible commitment on our part as the town. So that person, if, if they exist, has to be extremely special, you know, for us to put them, make that investment on them and put them through that type of training, you know, and get them back. And it's because it's about a year. You know, it's a year process before we can get them through school, get them out, get them through field training and have them make a contribution to the community, you know, with that training commitment. We ensure the adequate daily staffing to handle our public safety needs. We'll talk about our staffing levels. We have five officers per shift and that's, that's what we have is five. Our minimum levels, and we'll see that once again on our performance standards, is three. We will not operate without any less than three actual patrol units, you know, on, on the island. And that feels like that we can handle the call volume, especially during the day because you have admin here, you have the administrative staff here, then we can all jump in and help. But five, you know, in, in our world and much other departments' world, five don't mean five. You have a, you have a vacancy, you drop down to four. You have someone calling sick, you drop down to three. You have somebody in training. So it, it doesn't take long where you're, you're trying to balance, balance those shifts out and keep it running. And our departmental accreditation, I know this was directly aligned with your strategic, you know, with the town's strategic plan. That's very important to me. You know, we reached that standard about six months ago with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And we, we went through a risk assessment with them and that entails them coming in, they done an onsite review of us, interviewed police officers, makes, making sure that we're operating in best practices to minimize the risk for this town. And what that is, and, you know, a prime example is vehicle chases. Do we have a, do we have a sound policy, you know, for that? So any of our high liability areas that we're governed by a policy that is best practice in 2025. We have, within the last couple of months, we are seeking an, an additional accreditation through the North Carolina Training and Standards Committee. And that's about, on average, it takes an agency about two years to get through that process. I'm hoping that we get through it in half that time, about a year. So it's a little more in-depth review, not much. You know, I feel really good about that. But when you start talking about the professionalism and accountability that, the accountability measures that we have internal, internally, that's where that really shows. When you have that type of oversight or you're meet, you're meeting those benchmarks. And that's a goal of ours. And I hope to sit here next year before you and say we've accomplished that. It may be a little, that may be a little excessive, but that's my goal. But, so that, those are directly tied to our budget. Just a couple of things that I, a couple of goals and objectives. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Catherine. All right. So our performance measures, you know, our response to our emergency calls, you know, I, you know, my benchmark or the police department's administration is to continue to keep it under three minutes for someone calling 911 and have an emergency and they're need, they need a police officer sitting in their driveway. So we're at 2 minutes and 51 seconds after we've done the analysis. Our clearance rates, this is something that is very important here, is our violent crime, you know, and I certainly don't want to jinx that, but we have a very low violent crime rate. We've had no murders, no robberies, no rapes. That is, that's outstanding for our community that we live in this place where we're not dealing with that on a daily basis. Our crimes against person, now that's our clearance rate, is slightly better than the national average. And also our property crime rate is above the national average for clearance, clearance rates. Our traffic accidents, you know, we had 219 accidents without an injury and 13 with injury. I think six of those, six or seven of those injuries were golf cart related. And, but that's part of, you know, that's part of our community, community there. And I think, I feel like with a strong officer presence that we have, we will keep that, keep those numbers low. That's the, that's a, a very, a priority with us with our traffic stops. We had over 4,200 traffic stops last year and that is directly related to, to that. We have come to, there's, I guess it's, you know, when I first became the chief, we, I had some folks that, you know, would email me about the presence that we had on, you know, coming on the island about the police and, you know, thought it may have been a little excessive. However, I, I can report to you now that I had a con, I've had conversations with several people that look forward to seeing the police as they cross over the bridge. It makes them feel comfortable. So the, so we've kind of went from one to the other and people expect that. And that's a good thing. That's a good thing for the police department. That's a good thing for our town. And we discussed the, the patrol staffing levels. We have five, five patrol, uniform patrol on a shift. Our minimum patrol is three, which we very rarely have that three, especially during the day that's active. And then we, we discussed our professional accreditation through the league and then also our pursuing the accreditation through the training and standards. So that, there, that's our, you know, that's our goals and how we're going to, how we're going to move forward this year. We, one of the things that's on my mind and, you know, on our minds is, you know, and we know is coming, is golf carts. You know, what can we do to, what can we do to minimize that? Minimize the, the seatbelt violations, them being in a 45 mile, mile per hour zone. And I, I want you to know that we are, we're doing some things to improve that. We've pushed out the slow ride video a couple of weeks ago to try to educate folks, you know, on our social media platform. We are, we are in the short rows. We're developing new signs on East Oak Island Drive and South Middleton that prohibits the golf carts in those 45 mile per hour zone. So they are in your face and they're visible. And we're probably going to put a couple more throughout and that way they're just not at the 35 and the 45 mile, mile per hour zone marks. And just to further educate folks because we, you know, and the, and the weakness with this, you know, the weakness with our enforcement efforts is every seven days we get a new batch of folks that come in and it's like, okay, here we go. Yeah, yeah. And the, I will say that our golf cart businesses that are on the island have really done a good job. They have done their part educating. And I'll use Pete's golf cart as an example. I know they have a conversation with everybody that rents a golf cart from them. And the, the rules and regulations are on the steering wheel, they're on, they're taped to the windshield, they're, we have, we, we have it taped up everywhere. We have, have it in their face. And we'll stop folks and, you know, well, I didn't know I'd have a seatbelt on. Well, it's right there. You know, it's on the steering wheel that you should do that. That's just a challenge. And it's a storm that we have to weather every, every year. And hopefully it will be mitigated even more this year. And then, you know, August to September, it kind of fades away. And then we have, you know, we have three or four months without, you know, without that heavy influx of golf carts and.
Chief, we were talking recently about where the predominant issues you see with golf carts, and it's more golf carts that are associated with their Airbnb or VRBO property, less so than those that are in a rental program.
Correct. That's correct.
What can we do? And I, you know, after talking to you, I was kind of coming up with some ideas, like I, I don't have any.
Right, right.
What are we going to educate? How can we educate?
So that's a, that's a difficult question. And I wish I had a very clear, if I had an answer for that one, I would have done it a couple of years ago, to be honest with you, to reach that, to, to reach those folks. And, you know, short of communicating with the homeowner who rents that house and having, just like we do with Pete's, going, okay, here's our, if you're gonna, if you're gonna allow a golf cart with your rental, you know, go over these laws, goes, go over these ordinances with, you know, with your tenants. But as we, as we know, a lot, a lot of times when those are rented, you know, the owner, you know, in today's world, never communicates other than electronically with someone who's renting the house. So that's a, that's a challenge, but we are, we'll definitely, you know, if, if someone had a good idea to reach that population, I, I would definitely, definitely like to minimize that.
So won't be perfect, but I do have a, a possible suggestion that might help some. When homeowners decide to rent their house, they are required to come in and understand the rules of room occupancy tax and reporting requirements for that. That's a time that we have an opportunity to touch that customer. So we could do it the, the soft approach, the educational approach at that point. Now, there are still some that don't even realize they have to come in for room occupancy tax and we continue to try to educate that way. But we do have a packet of, of information that goes out at that point. So we could include whatever information the chief would like.
Golf cart rules as well, stay off the dunes and.
Yep. We could enhance that package.
So homes that decide they're going to start Airbnb in their house, I mean, they, having known some people who do it, they just assume that Airbnb is going to pay all the taxes, which they do. But they have to physically come in here?
We encourage that so that they will come in and understand the rules of rental and everything. So it, it, it's a challenge educationally, but that's at least one more opportunity when they do.
So on Tuesday, Chief, you wouldn't know this, but on Tuesday, we talked about the possibility of maybe, Catherine, that we arrange a listening session with our rental agencies. And this maybe is something we can add to that agenda that we, since, that's probably the majority of rentals are rented, are managed by agencies, that perhaps we can replicate something similar to what we've done with the golf cart rental agencies. We can encourage the rental agency management companies to in, install similar cautions on the golf carts that accompany those rentals. Just a thought.
That's a good one, too. We'll continue to explore every avenue.
And hopefully have, in a rental program, I mean, they've got a nice steering binder generally in the houses and they have the rules of, of the road for the house as well as for golf carts. It's really the Airbnbs that they don't, they, it's all done online. There's no interaction between the owner and the renter and.
The owner might even live in Charlotte.
No instructions typically, so, yeah.
Chief, I know we get all new people every seven days and that's a very good point. And I know that your office tries to make people feel welcome and thank you for coming to Oak Island. You chose us instead of somewhere else. But when we do get these infractions, what percent of those infractions end up becoming a ticket?
You talking about a, with LSDs?
Golf carts on, on West Oak Island Drive specifically. I mean, we can't just warn everybody. Sooner or later, I'm sure your people give some tickets.
We do. We give us a certain level of ticket. Of course, that's officer discretion. If someone has an infant sitting on their lap, they're going to get a ticket. If you have a, a, adults, there's, there's a possibility there that they would not get a ticket. You know, however, if there's a child involved in that, that's, you know, we're, we're going to write you a ticket for that. And I, I feel like that that should be, I'm not going to sit my infant on my lap, you know, and ride around on the golf cart. And so I think we stopped last year, I think we stopped, I want to say 356 golf carts last year. I don't remember the, the, the percentage of warnings versus citations. However, there is, there is citations that are reading, written, but there's also that officer discretion. And, you know, it's, and I'll be honest with you, 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 you stop a car, you stop a family and you stop a husband and a wife and you walk up to them and say, you know, I stopped you because you didn't have your seatbelt on. And they're like, I'm so sorry. I had no earthly idea. I, I, it will not happen again. So that, that's where that discretion comes in. And I, I can't tell them every single infraction you see, you, you write a ticket. a ticket. Now, we're gonna take a strong stance on, on children in a golf cart. And however, that level of discretion, you know, for, for other-
Acceptable answer. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I want people to feel good about coming to our town. Sooner or later, your people have to say, you stepped across my line.
That's right.
Chief, how about if the children are driving a golf cart? Pretty much a hundred percent they-
It, it is.
You're gonna go visit with-
Yes, that's right. Yeah. And once again, you, that's one of those areas where you should know better. And, and especially, you know, not only that, it's this, the, the level of traffic that we have on the island now. I mean, it is, it is so heavy. And of course, it's picked up since Easter. And, you know, now it will continue, you know, all the way through Octoberish, somewhere there. And, but yes, to answer your question.
The other I see is number of passages exceed the number of seatbelts.
Right.
So their visibility is obstructed and there's no way they could be aware of what's happening. Three sixty, the driver is. So I'm hoping we're-
And some of those, you know, carts can seat six people. And, you know, that's a, that's a large golf cart. And-
But when they've got eight or nine-
And they have a right.
And, and some of them are kids.
And where we've seen the traffic accidents with it is when they round, when, most of the time, they round a corner, you know, let's say they're going from Forty-Sixth Street on the yacht. And they round that curve or yacht on to Forty-Sixth Street, they make the curve too fast and the cart tips over. You know, we, that's, that's what we see, you know, the majority of the time when we do have a traffic accident.
Thank you.
How do your people determine if a golf cart is street legal?
So your golf cart-
You just drive down the road and you glance over and look at it at three in the afternoon with no headlights on?
It has to have a license plate on it. So just like, just like your car, it has to have all the safety equipment. It has to have working headlights, taillights, turn signals, license plate, side mirrors. So there's a standard there, but the most importantly is the license plate.
Good point.
Yep. So I, I think that takes us through just a couple of things that I want to touch on. I think that takes us through our performance measures. Internally, we had some goals that was very important to us. And we've worked with Mike Emery to increase our online presence, you know, to provide that ability for our community to communicate directly with the police department through our website. And essentially, we wanted to enhance, you know, our website. And we input meaningful content on that. If someone does have a question. And we've worked with Mike over the past couple of months to really put some content on, on our website and where folks can get their questions answered. But, you know, most importantly, if they want to commend a police officer, there's a, there's a form there. If they need a, if they wanna file a complaint directly with the police department, that complaint form is on there and it, and it comes straight, straight to us. And we've had very good, since Mike has launched that for us, we've had very good success with that. You know, not only that, you know, reporting statistical information, we have, you know, we have a category that reports when we move our speed trailer around town, that all, all that, that, all that data is up to, current and up to date. And, you know, it's accessible where someone wants to get on there and they see it on their street. In a couple of weeks, you'll see, you'll see the statistics from that. And so it's just another way for us to communicate with, with the community and provide information. You know, our annual reports are on there. So if someone wants to look at our annual report, they look at it and evaluate it and see what we're doing. And so that's been a very positive. However, that, that was one of our goals this year is to increase our online presence. And from joining the team, the job application, to providing information on a mobility device. It's all in one, Mike has it all in one area now and it's very user friendly. So we've, we, you know, we've made some headway with that. We've, we've created a few committees inside the police department, you know, to further enhance our professionalism and morale, where we have the officers during intervals through the year now, they can provide feed, written feedback to me if they see a place where we can improve. And so it just gives that formal, formal avenue for an officer to send something in and it get evaluated. And to, and in the essence of more professionalism in our department and to make it more efficient, to make sure that we're maximizing the efficiency, you know, of the agency.
Chief, the fixed, the miles per hour, which is your goal and this is your speed, those things, we have, how many of those?
Two.
Have we thought about maybe adding more of those? And I think specifically on East Yacht, East Oak Island Drive. I mean, West Yacht is, for the most part, not an issue, but East Yacht is, we walk in every morning and there's construction traffic and it's just so much traffic.
Let me, let me back up. We have four. So we have two fixed solar powered speed limit signs. One of them is on yacht. And it's in, it's facing eastbound. The second one is on beach, near the point. And then we have the two mobile speed trailers that we move around. So we have two fixed and two mobile. And I think we have, we've had the, I've had, we've had one of the mobile speed trailers on yacht over the past maybe two weeks or so. Because we know what's, we, we know that's getting ready to increase. And so just trying to get ahead of that.
So Chief, in the capital outlay, you asked for one eighty-six and change. And the admin recommendation is ninety-seven. What are we losing in that page four?
So that is one vehicle, one truck with a complete outfit to it. So there is one currently that's in the, remained in the budget, along with, we had a few thousand dollars for, to upgrade the surveillance cameras. We have some that's not working. And since, you know, we, we oversee that, I think we got thirty-six surveillance cameras inside, inside Town Hall and the police department. We've got a number of those that have never been replaced and the building's been here since two thousand three, two thousand four. So I think we need to replace like six or seven of those. And then add a, a key fob entry to one door down at the police department, which was included in the capital. However, so yes, you're right. I did ask for two vehicles and the key fob slash cameras. Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, could you just give us the highlights of contracted services?
Yes.
Line sixty-one hundred.
There's a whole lot.
Okay. So the, the FMRT is required. We have to send folks for medical and psychological evaluations prior to them getting hired. And of course, that's a cost. That's a, that's a cost that if you hire five people during the year, it's a certain amount. You may, you may hire one people. So that's kind of a moving target there. But that's the first one is the FMRT. The Southern Software is a record, is our old records management system, which we have transitioned. And I think we are in our second year with the new one, which you'll come down here and see the, so where's that at?
Let me ask the question a different way. What accounts for the, the delta, the change?
Yes. Okay. So here, right. So here's, I'm sorry, kind of-
Went up significantly.
Significantly, yes. Okay. The, there's a couple of things. One example is the attorneys that we, we have on our, access to our attorneys. That went up five percent. So we had one, two, I think we had about six different, different contracted services. The fees have went up this year. Second of all, with the, I think it was three, four years ago, you'll see the biggest increase here is because of the Motorola body camera slash in-car cameras. So that's a, that's a fifty thousand dollars of that. And we have two more payments. We'll pay it this year and then we'll pay it next year. So that's, that's the increase.
Thank you.
Chief, line out on forty-one oh nine, repair and maintenance facilities. Scott told us you had a bad leak, each wall leak over at the police department. Is this pertaining to that or is this something different?
No, that's, that's, that's been in our budget since I've been here, you know, so that, for that repair. And it, that, those repairs can be anything, you know, we're, we're getting ready-
Comes up.
Yeah, just whatever comes up. Correct.
So the salaries and wages is a significant jump. You know, it's not an add to, it's a replace, you've got one officer position to fill.
That's correct.
Okay. So it looks like there's a, there's a significant jump, a thirteen percent jump. What was-
Yeah, I, I can help add context to that if that's okay, Chief. So in doing the, the deep dive with Helen this year, we, we went through and made sure we were accounting for everything that was actual required in the salaries. We have additional things when it comes to, you'll see this in both police and fire. When you mentioned BLET training, we have a retiree separation allowance that is required. That depends on who is retired and what their payouts are each year. We also have holiday pay considerations. If they're actually working on a holiday, there's some additional pay incentives. We also identified the probation, or excuse me, the promotion increases. And both police and fire have had a substantial number of those, which is a positive. As they get the promotions, they have a, an increase to their salary. It was also included as a probationary increase and that was an additional five percent. At the beginning of this, our first meeting, I discussed that's one of the policies that we're looking to change because that was so expensive and, and addition. Some departments didn't have very many promotions or reclasses throughout the year. Police and fire did. So we're making sure that we're appropriately now capturing all of those. They weren't captured and budgeted upfront in the past. It was sort of move money around, hope you have a bunch of vacancies and it was covered with vacancies or we cleaned it up at year end. I think it's a very positive thing that they've done promotions as needed. They're also both at full strength. They don't have as many vacancies as they used to in the past. And I think that's a, a tribute to them and it's a positive thing, but it does cost us more. I don't, I don't wanna budget, not accounting for everything.
In one area.
Right. And certainly counting on vacancies. Our goal is to keep and retain good people.
I think it makes sense from the standpoint of retention policy, right? There is movement within the department. And the longer I serve, the more uncompensated, right? And that makes, makes it a more attractive place to come to and stay within. Because you wanna reduce your attrition rates if you can.
He's, he's done a good job of that, sure.
And the budget line for retirement is a significant bump as well, which is ten five ten, zero five one zero. It looks like it's a pretty sizable jump.
Yes. And if you'll noticed in the past, I think it just wasn't budgeted fully. But also this year, we're anticipating from the state treasurer's office, increases in the state retirement, both in elders and what is considered the Leo retirement. Theirs is going up to sixteen point one percent. We have no choice. That's required of all local governments. So there's a significant increase in that as well as in the non-sworn law enforcement is going up to, help me out, thirteen point-
It's fourteen point three five.
Fourteen point three five. We, we usually know that number definitively by now. It is still in discussion in Raleigh, but they have given us that as a preliminary best guest number. So that's what we've plugged in. We're hoping to hear a final number any day now.
And we have to live with the number they give us.
That's right. Another reason that we are very purposeful in new positions as opposed to contracting services out, because if you can, because if it's a one-time need, use a contractor. If you do a full-time employee, all of these additional requirements kick in on top of salary, which, which is a good thing, but it's very, very costly.
You might remember, it was either last year or maybe the year before, where in the budget meetings, we had this very discussion with the, and across the board with the COG mayors, we had meet, a single meeting on just this, where the state required retirement funding for police and, and fire was just, not that you don't deserve it. I don't want to put these two things in the same plane. But it's just not something that is sustainable for local governments, especially small towns. So it's something that we wrestle with and will wrestle with continually in this, in this current system. But again, it is unrelated to performance. It's not as if we're trying to get by with less money or somehow don't give our police and fire everything that they deserve. But it, it is an issue that is larger than just Oak Island.
Another way to put that is, this is a portion of the budget that we don't really control. And the state is dictating to us. And they're dictating to us based on their dealings with insurance companies. I don't need to say anything else, though. I mean, that says it all.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for giving us a safe town, sir.
Thank you. Thank you guys for supporting the police department. It's much appreciated. And we, we'll do our best and to serve the community to, to the very best of our ability. And we are always looking to improve. And if areas that we can improve upon, we certainly will and approach it with an open mind and, and a welcome, you know, welcome statement from folks.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. You do a great job. I hope you're feeling the love of the community as well.
Absolutely. Sure do. Thank you so much.
With that, and Chief Price, if you'll give us a few more minutes, if we could take a ten-minute break. Yes. And come back at eleven, please.
Yeah.
We are back from break. And Catherine, to you.
Thank you very much. We have just a few more moments with Chief Morris. We have one more item that we would like to discuss with him before we move on to the fire department. Chief?
Okay. So over the past year, Ms. Adams and I have talked about an, an additional or an IT position for the town. And the reason that is incredibly important for me is that the person that takes care, takes care of the majority of our IT responsibilities will be retiring within the next two years. And I'd like to go through you just a little bit of the responsibilities of just the police department when it comes to IT. We have thirty-eight laptop computers, eleven desktop computers, eighteen in-car cameras, twenty AVL automated vehicle locator systems, twenty-two body cameras, thirty cell phones, twenty mobile hotspots, sixty-four traffic safety cameras, thirty-six internal surveillance cameras, telephones. And Lieutenant Mike Oxford, who has been here for many years, takes care of, takes care of this. There is an issue with us every day. When we have this much technology, every single day, we are working through something with, with these IT responsibilities. I'm not, I'm not advocating for just a, an IT position for the police department. What I am advocating for is a- Uh, what I am advocating for is a town position that we can use as well as admin, fire, development. Everybody has access to that onsite person for their IT, uh, needs. Now, we do have, of course, we have hooks, uh, you know, and hooks does help us, you know, to some degree. However, when you have somebody, when you have an issue and you need it addressed, uh, within minutes or, uh, in a timely fashion, I think that that position would, is incredibly important for not only the police department, but for the town.
And we agreed, we were working on that need, um, that we've identified in the rest of the town as well, um, also to help Mike Emery. He, he's having to juggle a lot of that and, um, he needs to continue to be able to enhance his area. So we, we were talking and trying to find some synergies in how we could utilize one position that would address all needs. Um, and right now, we feel comfortable that we can make sure his needs are addressed as well as the rest of the departments and, um, Mike Emery's. So we are, we are creatively working on that solution. Again, I'm trying to minimize the number of new positions, uh, as much as possible, but this would be very high on our priority list for a new position. And I wanted him to have a chance to speak on his behalf.
And this position would then, um, or this individual that we're looking for would also, um, be able to bring strengths in media as well, particularly, uh, online.
Primarily from an IT perspective, yep, to help, to help Mike with that part of what his responsibilities are.
But they would be savvy and could work, not just computers, but as it relates to, to, uh...
Utilizing our, our Spectrum 8 channel, getting some additional educational development. Yep.
Terrific, thanks.
I hear you saying a building-wide IT person, would that person be situated in the police department or would that person be situated over here?
Over here, in, in admin. But it would have to represent, um, the needs of all of the town, but certainly priority to the police department. That, that is where we need it. When he needs it, we need it.
Excellent.
We're, we're large enough to withstand a, one in-house IT person.
Well, we've talked about this in the past.
Yeah.
We've identified the need, we have fulfilled the need. Just not sure that, um, we're going to be able to find a technologist who can serve that many masters, um, and interface with hooks. I, I think the search criteria, while I would defer to Mark who works with computers, the search criteria is going to be really difficult to get somebody who has those kind of skills.
Um, and it would not, it would not be recommended to be instead of our current, current third-party provider, it would be in addition to.
Right. It's the on-the-ground here.
Correct.
That's interfacing with the contracted service.
We'd continue to maintain the, the servers and the firewalls and, and the larger data needs.
Yeah, well, I think to John's point, um, if you try to define, um, all of the skills that you are looking for across the different, um, variety of technology, because technology isn't necessarily transferable from, say, a laptop or a desktop to a car video camera and recording capability. Some technology transfers, but not 100%. So I think if you try to put out there that you're looking for someone that can serve all of these skills, you're either, one, not going to get anyone to apply because someone will say, well, I don't have that skill or that skill, and so they won't apply. Or, or two, uh, your selection criteria, you know, you're, even if someone applies, they're not going to have, like, all the skills, right? So I think we really need to kind of focus on what is 80% of the job that you're going to look for and is the person trainable to learn the other 20%, right? Just like lieutenant, right? I wouldn't expect a lieutenant to come over here and fix Mike's spectrum problem. He may be able to do so, but that would, that shouldn't be an expectation for that role, right? And vice versa. So I would say let's, let's try to capture, you know, the 80% skill set that truly benefits what we need and the other skill sets are just going to have to be trainable, right? And if you're lucky enough to bring somebody on before lieutenant retires, there's your cross-training opportunity right there. Like, you know, hey, I don't, I don't understand body cam technology, teach that to me, right? And so they capture that and skill transfer before retirement. So that would be my recommendation, is not try to ask for the, the world, try to ask for what you really need at a foundation level and then we'll train on the rest, so.
And should we move forward, you know, hooks, they'll, they'll be an integral part of helping you write a job description, skill set and whatnot. They might even be able to help you find a person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Price. Okay. Your turn to fire. They are 10-5-30. And again, we'll start with Chief Price's goals and objectives.
Thank you all. Um, I have a visual display. In one of our early meetings, Catherine and I were talking about a lot of the things that the fire department does and our level of service that we provided or are providing to the town with, uh, and everyone knows we have enhanced that level of service since I've been here dramatically. In fact, in some cases, I think we're outrunning the level of service with the amount of, uh, assets that we have. Um, that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's something that we talk about in these meetings. Uh, Catherine made the comment, she said, but y'all do a great job. It looks like y'all have just got everything handled. And I use the analogy that we're a duck, and I'm sure people have heard that before. And when you look at the duck above water, they're nice and calm and cool and just floating around, but as you look underneath, they are paddling like crazy. Um, and that's a pretty good analogy, I think, of how our life is on a day-in and day-out basis, so. Um, I just wanted to kick that off with that. You know, the, the level of service we're providing, I think, is, is appropriate for the town and everything we have going on. With that comes the challenges of everything else that we have to do to provide that level of service, so. Everything that we will go over today directly relates to level of services and whether we need to maintain or scale back or enhance. So we'll start with the goals and objectives. Um, as Chief Morris said earlier, you know, all of our goals and objectives talk about the safety of the town, and so we keep that in number one and what is the best for the citizens. Um, response time reduction is one of our biggest things where we talk about the response to the call. Um, in the, in the year report, our goal is to have a under-five-minute response time to pretty much every call we have with lower response times to other types of calls, for medical calls and ocean rescues and stuff like that. And with the areas that we have off-island and, and adds to the average where our average response time for 2024 was about five minutes and 17 seconds to, uh, dispatched, you know, fire calls. Um, we're a little bit better on the medical side of calls, but it does depend geographically where the call does happen of what the response time is. And so we, we try to look at that in the districts between, um, Station 1 District and Station 3 District of what the response times are. Averages, as you know, you could have 10 great responses and then one bad one is going to bring your average, uh, kind of out of whack, so. Um, response time reduction, we look for that five-minute mark. Uh, as I put on there to building staff Station 4 in the future, that will definitely assist our response times on the off-island areas. One of the goals and objectives we talked about, and we've brought this before, is the conversion of the fire fees to the fire tax for the funding of the fire department and to effectively and efficiently fund the department to meet the objectives and the performance measures. Goals and objectives, objectives with staffing is properly staffing the apparatus to create efficient, safe response to the emergencies. Our objective, as we talked about in the big picture of things, is staffing each apparatus with four personnel, which is, uh, when we were talking about in one of the last presentations, um, uh, Mr. Buck, we talked about that, that number of 24 being the maximum, the ISO talked about, and that's not what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to achieve, uh, the recommended standard at four per, four per unit. Uh, as it stands right now, when we do have, um, and we'll get into this further as we go, our minimum staffing level right now is six, which puts two people on each unit. We have three units that are staffed, which is our requirement. Well, if you go to a fire and you have six people, take three of them out right off the bat because three of them have to operate the apparatus. So you've got three people to do the job of what should be 16 if everyone arrived at the same time. And so that, that will get into the conversations, we'll get into staffing and stuff like that. Um, on a note for that is in 2024, as we were talking about with staffing, again, we'll talk about this a little bit further, was we averaged a person and a half short every day, every shift last year because of sickness, vacation, training and injuries. And so, you know, we're running eight positions each shift and take a person and a half out on average each day, and those positions are having to be the backfilled by part-timers, which I have a couple of part-timers working maximum hours each week to try to cover it, or they're filled in by Chief Silhens and myself. Um, as I told Catherine, it's, working every day of the week is tough trying to make sure that the calls are answered because when they call 911, we can't put it off until tomorrow. We've got to go right then. And so we're, we're backfilling not only with part-timers as available, and if that doesn't happen, the, the Chief, Chief Silhens and I fill that gap. Um, Chief Wagner actually rode the ladder truck yesterday because we were short. And so we're, uh, we're, we're that duck that's, you know, paddling as hard as we can. Thank you. ISO, uh, that is a big topic that we've always talked about. We did receive our ISO evaluation on March 3rd. We went through that, uh, month and months and months of process of getting the information together, uh, met with the ISO inspector, put it all together. I will tell you that I have received a, um, discussion or, or, I received information from him where ISO evaluation is complete, is being returned to the state. We should find out our grade here shortly. Uh, I am not going to say what we got. I might know, but it has not been published, so I'm not going to put it out there, but I will say that we improved significantly. And I will leave it at that. And when the grade comes out, I think everyone will be very, very happy and appreciative. Um, the, the biggest goal with ISO is to maintain, uh, and improve the ISO grade. I think we talked about in one of the meetings, uh, Councilman Martin was talking about, that is, that should be our strive. I want to make sure that everyone understands that we don't chase an ISO grade. We are not, I don't come to ask for you for equipment and staffing and stations and everything else trying to obtain that Level 1 score. That's not our intention. I allow ISO to come in and evaluate us so it grades us on the job that we're doing. We don't chase the grade, we let the grade trace, trace, chase us, excuse me. So, um, that has been brought up in the past in a few meetings that we don't need to spend a lot of additional funds chasing a better grade. We don't do that. We provide a level of service and let the grade reflect the level of service that we're doing. We want to make that very clear to people, especially, you know, the taxpayers. We're not spending money to try to get this score to look good. We do the job and let the score reflect what we're doing. Facilities and equipment, um, again, one of our objectives, we are, you know, planning, looking at Station 4 in the mainland area of town, and then we continually aggressively and efficiently replace our apparatus and equipment. Everything that we have in the fire department has, uh, time limits on it, just like SCBA's, they can only go a certain amount of time, you know, our protective equipment, all that. Apparatus, they have time limits, whether it be five years, 10 years, 15 years. And we've established a replacement plan on pretty much every piece of apparatus that we have. Um, we've, we've estate, established replacement plans on all the turnout gear, SCBA's, and so that way we can systematically and methodology, methodologically have what's good, what's best, what's safe in the current standards and not have, uh, equipment that is going to be out of service, equipment that is dependable, you know, that kind of thing. So with, with y'all's support, the town's support and everybody, we have that in place and we are working on continuing that. So how do we take these goals and objectives and we do everything, our work plan and how we build it into the strategic plan, which I think in a summary is making the town safe, uh, making it a nice place to come visit and live. Our performance measures, we measure our response time and efficiency. Again, structured fires, there's our statistics on that from last year, five minutes and 17 seconds on structured fires, four minutes and five seconds on medical calls, four minutes and 10 seconds on ocean rescues. And we, and we hope that and anticipate that that time will actually be reduced with our enhanced level of service on the, on the beach this year. Um, our target goal, five minutes, three to four minutes and three minutes on that. Uh, we track that through our records management system and we look at that quite frequently. We look at what the time is from the call goes out to when they get on the truck to the response time it takes to get on the scene. As we talked about staffing, we look at our, our staffing levels, of course, every day because that's one of the biggest jobs that Chris Silhens does is make sure that we have enough people to do the job. Um, currently, the minimum staffing level we have is six, which we make it work, and I, I absolutely hate making it work, but we make it work, um, whether we're using part-time or whether we, uh, him or myself actually come back and, and fill in or make sure that we're available for response. This island is very unique, it seems like, when we have and start getting busy, we'll have a call, we'll have another one, then we'll have another one. We literally, like, 12 times last year, I had four calls simultaneously. Um, we, we are trying our best to accommodate that. Sometimes it just doesn't happen, but we're working on it. So again, we measure that on a daily basis, based on our scheduling. Um, ISO rating and performance, again, we don't chase the grade, but I do use the ISO standard as a benchmark for some of the things that we do. Uh, going back to just previously, we talked about that number of 24. Well, that would be great if we had an unlimited fund, but we don't, so we use that as a benchmark and we go, what is appropriate for us? And we've, we establish, this is what's appropriate, this is what we can do, this is what's reasonable. Um, prevent, prevention and public education, we actually like that as a performance measure because we want to get 100% of the people that we can, we want to have a discussion with them and talk to them, whether it be fire prevention or, you know, um, smoke detectors, trips and fall hazards, uh, beach flags, all that. Fire prevention and public education is a big thing that we promote. With all the events that we have going on, we track how many people we contact, and it was well over 10,000 people last year that we have record that we actually talked to. We do that by counting the fire hats that we give out, the stickers we give out. It's, it's, we have a lot of prevention and public education that we do and we track that, and that's one of our performance measures to make sure that we are contacting as many people as we can and getting that safe message out there of what's going on, especially with the beach, that's one of the big things. We actually developed a new little sticker this year that we've been distributing out where all they have to do is scan it, takes it straight to the website, gives them the, the status of the flag for the day. We've been pushing out a lot of those and so, um, it, it's, that is one of the biggest things we do, is prevention and public education.
It started that, Chief. How about, can we include something about, you know, safe, um, procedures for golf cart charging?
Yes, sir.
Putting it into that educational component.
And so last year, when we had the, the Meet the Chief, we, we had a large discussion about that, is, is what the safe procedures of golf carts. And we are always going to refer back to manufacturer's recommendations. Um, with that, having a dedicated outlet in your, your area for charging, not leaving the golf cart plugged in, you know, charging overnight for long periods of time. Manufacturer's recommendations of what it is, and we have pushed out a lot of information, especially after last year about that. Yes, sir.
I think when you put, when you scan that QR code, maybe that's, you have a link in there as well for safe.
And that's something that I could get with Mike about is, is right now, that QR code takes you straight to the beach page, which shows the flag, but we could also do a, a fire safety type thing, that we could create a fire safety page. Um, we've actually created an ISO page on the website. As soon as we get all of our information, we're going to show what we did, how we did it and what we got. Um, and so we could include that, too.
And on the ISO rating, so we think about, so the better the ISO rating, the lower the cost of insurance?
And, and typically, yes, is so if you look at ISO, um, and not all businesses or not all insurance companies utilize the ISO grade, but a lot of them do, but it does reflect the job performance that the fire department does. And so 10 being a non-rated area, one being the, the best score you can get. And so 10 being a non-rated area, one being the, the best score you can get. Anything below a six, residentially typically doesn't affect the insurance ratings, but for commercial, it does affect it all the way down to the one. And it just, it measures, you know, the job you're doing. So commercially, right now, we stand as a three. If we were to improve that grade in the commercial businesses, they would see, they would see a reduction in insurance costs, depending on the company they use. But I will tell you, in reference, when I was at another department, we went from a six to a four, and our local health facility club saved $5,000 a year in insurance ratings.
I mean, that would be a great public awareness campaign, right? When we do get our rating back, rating in.
Yes.
So whether, we know it's going to positively affect commercial businesses, but even possibly some residential.
Well, and it can affect the larger, if, larger structures do carry sometimes their own ratings. So anything over 3500 or 4500 square foot typically isn't rated in the residential. They actually carry almost a commercial rating. Now, I don't know if the insurance rates follow that, but it does show you that if you do have a better rating, you can handle a, a, a larger size incident, as long as you have the assistance from other people, so.
Chief, you're not an insurance agent, but is that automatically the insurance companies contact the
No.
commercial businesses? Commercial businesses have to contact the insurance?
And that's the best way to do is, once we're able to, to produce our scores as a business, it would be in best interest, they call the insurance company and say, hey, you know, I'm in this town and we just received a X rating, can I get a little help with my insurance premium? And, and they can evaluate it from there.
That'd be something, great, great idea, but maybe Catherine, that once the rating is in, maybe Hallie can have an outbound communication campaign to all commercial businesses.
Chief, I have a question from your previous slide where you were, your target measure on prevention and education to perform inspections on 100% of our commercial occupancies.
Yes.
To date, this town has refused to classify structures that sleep 20 and 30 people as commercial properties. To me, those are a tragedy waiting to happen. Do you have any, is there anything that allows you to inspect those facilities?
No, nothing that I know of, because if it's built as a residential property, the only thing that we can do is at the time of construction up until they receive the CO, there are criteria they have to meet, which determines whether they have to have a sprinkler system or not, the, the criteria for the construction and everything else. But once they receive the CO on a residentially built property, we're done.
Good question.
But we do, and while you brought that up, we do inspect 100% of our commercial occupancies. Just now, make sure that we have a, a list that he goes through every year, and he tries to finish that up by October of each year, so that way if he has some stragglers, he can grab those towards the end. So we are making inspections on all the commercial properties. Along with that, while he's doing the inspections, our crew typically goes out with him and does the pre-plan of the property. And so we're realistically pre-planning or trying to pre-plan 100% of our commercial and properties also. So that way, if we do have an incident there, the guys know what they're getting into.
Chief, along the lines of education, while we're here, so a number of our properties have one exit because they're on pilings.
Right.
It seems to me that that might be a focus area for education is when that situation, you know, what, what should our residents be doing to help ensure that they have a safe exit? And that one exit is engulfed.
It is, and there's some educational pieces, and, and I don't believe there's any requirements for that, you know. Second means an egress on, on residential properties, but just as I've talked to homeowners here that park up under their house, it's on an elevated part, where they had the vinyl siding and other things under the house, they actually changed all that and put fire-rated sheet rock up under it. So then when they park up under it, if there is an incident, it doesn't have, it delays the chance of it getting into the house. And so there are a lot of things which are also, they do cost, but there are a lot of prevention measures. Terry and I actually talked about stuff that she's done, where you take the pine straw and you get it away from the house, and you put a rock border in. And there's, there's a lot of preventative measures that can be done to, to prevent stuff and to contain things. And so if you were to take on your elevated houses and, and put a fire-rated plywood or sheet rock up under it where you park, if there was an incident with your vehicle or golf cart or boat or whatever under the house, it would delay the spread of the fire to the structure.
So I think things like that would really be a welcome addition to our educational programs, is how to contain fires once they start
Yes.
to save life and limb.
And, and the number one thing, and, and that this has always received a lot of pushback, and, and as the fire service, we'd love to see it, is that sprinklers in the house. Sprinklers in the house, they don't save the house, they save the people. That's, that's the design of it. And if you sprinkle your residents under construction, you know, you're, you're talking seven, I think, and this is just off the top of my head, it might be $7 to $12 a square foot to sprinkle the house during construction. But look at what the, the backside of things could be if you did have an incident and it kept it in check long enough for you to get out. It's worth it. It's worth that $20 a month extra in your mortgage. And I do understand that there is a lot of pushback sometimes on residential sprinkler systems, is people don't want to see it, but they build them now where you can, it has a little cap on it and it's not really visible. You know, oh, it might leak and ruin my house. Well, yes, but a fire will ruin your house, too. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things with the educational part that we can push out, it's just a matter of the what, what the people want to pay for and afford to what they feel safe at.
Well, but then that, the education is one thing, the personal decision is to, the extent to which they want to go is a whole nother thing. But if the education isn't there,
Exactly.
then, then they're flying blind, so to speak. I guess the other element to that is so many of the homes that have that one ingress egress, but they may have porches and/or decks. I would, I, I don't know what our codes are that would allow someone to build a stairway to the ground, and just something to consider as well. It just popped in my head, I would have asked that.
It would be a good question, and if nothing else, if they have a deck on the back with the egress to the front, having one of those escape ladders where you could throw it over the side and then climb down in case of emergency, so.
Right. Just a thought, thank you.
No problem. Our EMS response, as everyone knows, April 1st, we stepped up to the advanced level EMT, and we have already seen the results of that. Everyone is aware that we had an incident on the pickleball court with a cardiac arrest. That was our first day of being the advanced EMTs. The off-duty police officers immediately started CPR, and I just happened to be, I'd got off work and was stopping by the pizza place to, to get a bite before I went home, so I was a block away. Got there, got him hooked up, and actually performed the advanced stuff. We had him shot three times in six minutes, and it, it was a great call, and I understand last week, he played pickleball again.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a great story.
You, you met him, didn't you, Bill?
I met him.
Yeah, coffee with the cop. And so this is a great story, so we already have a success. And we've, we've, we're, it's just a great thing. So we're, we're very proud of that.
If he's willing, it might be worth doing a little profile to promote AED training, CPR and AED training, and how and where they can
Exactly. And, and since then, we've added the, the AED to the pickleball court, which, on the side note, is, you know, we have a big event going on in Middleton today. The news is there and everything else, it's part of the EMS training. It's a mass casualty disaster mock drill, and so that, that's where I was this morning. Everyone's getting their training in ICS and mass casualty and everything else, and after lunch, they're going to have everyone out there running around in circles and, and a festival with a incident, and so it's, it's, it's good training.
Training, mock.
Training. Yes. But yes, you know, we placed a pickleball at AED court. I actually was talking to Heather about placing one somewhere, maybe near the pump house in Middleton. That's something else we're looking at. Quick CPR and early defibrillation saves lives. The, the proof is, you know, 23 days, 24 days ago, the proof was there, and we've got them throughout town facilities. It is a program that we are, not to get ahead of myself and not to go down another road, but we actually have a program that we met with a day or two ago that I'm going to talk with the manager about partnering with a, a defibrillation company to cut, that puts them in citizens' homes and different things. And we are, we're going to be pushing that. We've talked to a lot of people, and Sean, our drone pilot, he's championing that, because honestly, I don't have time to champion it, but him and one of my firefighters are championing a, a community program on defibrillators and rapid CPR and defibrillation, and you'll be seeing that coming. I think it's a great program that's forthcoming, so.
Outstanding.
That's, I will tell you, and while we're on the EMS medical response, it is, it is a hot topic with us right now. As you saw in my annual report last year, we had 11 cardiac arrests here last year. We've had 12 already this year.
Residents or?
I, I, I'm not sure. We're just starting to track that data with, with being the advanced. So we're starting to track that, but I think the majority has been residents. And, and honestly, and cardiac arrests are very manpower intensive, too. It takes a lot of people to do that. It's, uh, it's, it's a hot topic for us right now, and it's been very busy. Catherine and I have talked about it, it's, it's a very stressful time. But we measure that response to EMS, we, we definitely own the cardiac arrests and save rates. Our target, our goal is to reduce the amount of medical calls, the amount of slip trips and falls, the amount of cardiac arrests, there's not so much we can do to reduce that. We are a older community, and we understand that, but there are things that we can do to try to mitigate that, whereas if you do wind up injured or with cardiac arrest of advances that we can take, and we're, we're moving forward with that stuff, so. Fire suppression effectiveness, we look at every fire that we go to and look at what can we do better? We're very fortunate to have the drone program, so they get the video when we're there, and we take the video and we train on it. It's like, this is what we need to do, this is what, this is what, this worked, this worked. And so we measure the, the suppression effectiveness. The last fire we had was a garage fire, it was contained to the garage, the guys did a great job. Quick knockdown, and we looked at that, what, could we do anything better? Well, not much on that one, because it was a, it was a good call. But we do track that and continue to measure how we are performing the suppression, especially with the loss and injuries to anybody. As you know, we have had that in the past, where we've had a firefighter fall through the floor. That's something that is, is, in my terms, unacceptable. It does happen, so it is a very risky job, everyone knows that, so. And then one of my things that I measure performance-wise, I'm not doing this to get attaboy from Catherine, but I measure our financial and resource management, is I look at, I look at our budget every day. My admin assistant, Sam, who I always say runs the department, we, typically, I can call and say, what have we spent? How much we got? How much do we have to spend and can I buy this? And we track that every day. We have spreadsheets on top of admins that we utilize to make sure that we are within, you know, proper spending limits, to make sure that we're doing things and making things efficient. We utilize state contracts, we utilize bid processes, all that kind of stuff to make sure that we are spending the tax mayor's money appropriately. We, we are not real flashy. We, we don't spend a whole lot of money on flashy things and, and stuff like that, so we want to get the best bang for our buck. And that's one of the things that I measure, is how are we doing financially, and what can we do to improve that? So, that's, uh, that's my performance measures. A five-year history on our budget, it has, from '21 to '22 on the pie graph there, it has, it has changed every year, and as y'all know, since I've been here, I started in October of 2022, 2022, there's been a lot of changes where the budgets have gone up and down, depending on what we have done. We have added staff, we've added equipment. It, from '21, it was down, '22 was higher, it went down in '23. There was a lot of things that went on in the history of the fire department that has affected the budget. And so we know as we're growing and as we're expanding, as we increase that level of service, the budget will go up, and that's just the trend that we're seeing right there. Our personnel ops and capital, you can see that our personnel number, of course, is going to be the highest number as everyone is. Our operation budget is the green right there, and then our capital, where we have the payments on the fire trucks and some other equipment like that. So I think the two trucks are the only thing that we actually have financed. We'll make our second year payment this upcoming, and then third year, then we'll get into the ladder truck, so. That gives us our total for that. I put this in here so that way we could see a comparison of the five-year fire fees and the general fund contributions, and I'm actually missing a line on that one, it is hidden. There's an orange line that fell below there. You can see the numbers right above that, is throughout history, I'll start like in '21, '22, 1.8 and then 1.5, so it has almost been a 50/50, maybe a 60/40 split between fire fees and general fund contributions to keep the fire department up and running. That's, uh, that's why we're having the conversations we will about the, the fire fee and the fire tax. That's it on that.
Very good. Questions for Chief?
Chief, if I could, sir?
Yes, sir.
Salaries and wages, first line, 0220, requested 1.9, but on part-time earnings has gone up from $37,000 to $55,000, now to possibly $270,000. If we did not, if we, if you're 1.5 people short on every shift, if we hired two additional fire personnel, would that lower the part-time earnings?
Yeah. So in the part-time earnings, what we did is, is as we talked about, we've consolidated the beach services unit, and the ocean rescue unit has expanded, and so both of those units are now tied into the part-time. In the details, we've split it out, where it's basically beach services and ocean rescue can constitute some of that, and then the part-time firefighters constitute some of that, and then there is an additional funding for seasonal firefighters, because we are taking a rescue firefighter from the engine and moving him to the beach as the supervisor for that ocean rescue unit. And so it's basically to backfill that full-time position off the engine, so we don't create even more staffing shortages during season. And so that, that, that number, what, if we hired two more firefighters?
It wouldn't change the
Well, two positions, which would be six firefighters, it wouldn't change that much. We could take that $50,000 and do away with that if we hired the, the full-time firefighters, but outside of that, that number would not change much.
He does have some increase in salaries and benefits because Joe Snap and Sean, the drone, knew from development services this past year.
Can you talk a little bit about the, the overtime, because that's doubled? What's, what's going on there?
Special events, beach days, holidays?
Yeah, that was the, the, basically the same thing since last year is what I put in, and so of course, we have the built-in overtime to the salaries, is, is 2,756 hours of regular time each year on a firefighter, 164 hours of overtime each year for a firefighter, which is automatically built into their salaries. So you're figuring, again, I'm, I'm pulling these numbers off the head, my head, about $140,000, $150,000 just in base overtime of what is compensated into a firefighter's salary. Then we have special events that I budget for. So when we have beach day, I'm required to have a fire truck at the pier for the fireworks. We're required to have certain things, basically the entire department works on beach day. It's a huge event for us. Scheduled events, sunset on summer, I have to have a fire truck there. I can't just pull a unit, because that unit would have to leave. When fireworks are on site, we had to have a designated unit there. So I've got about $45,000 in special events and overtime, which is scheduled, that we know, these are the events we've got to upstaff for, so that's in there like that.
So are you covering shifts with the overtime, or are you saying it's part of the way they're compensated, built-in overtime per year?
The majority of that overtime is part of the way they are compensated throughout the year, is, and I have this conversation with other fire chiefs, if we wanted to, to reduce that overtime, you'd have to add another shift at a total of well over $600,000, because you'd have, just the way that we get paid. So part of the compensation package is there is overtime included. It's a base salary plus their overtime because of the hours they work, it's based on a 52-hour work week, so there is, they work in a 28-day pay cycle, after 212 hours, they hit overtime. One week, they'll have six overtime, or one check, they'll have six overtime hours, the next checks, they'll have 32 hours overtime, if they do not work anything extra. Because of staffing shortages, with people sick, out vacation, I've got one injured, which will be out another two months, he's been out for two months. When we do not have a part-timer, that can work, and if myself or Chief Silens can't backfill or something like that, our last ditch is to hold a full-time, a full-time person person if they want to work some over. And so, yes, there is some of that in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a big number.
It is a big number. Yes, sir.
So the salaries and wages line, is there any requests for additional FTEs and?
Not in this. That'll be a, a additional conversation that we have today.
As well as no additional, the mainland fire station is not in here?
No. The additional request that we'll, we'll talk about today is basically to get us called up to where we need to be. Once we establish that, is, is, again, we talked about in, in past, the big picture, and I would love to get four per truck. And I'm not, I'm not asking to get four per truck today, or tomorrow, or even next year. What the staffing that I'm asking for this year, is I've asked for six people, which is two positions. And everyone knows that if I put one person on the truck, it takes three people to put that one person on the truck. So it's a one-for-three ratio. That gets us called up to put three people on each truck, is what we're looking for. I'm not asking for the four. My goal and intention is, is to get to the big picture where we can staff it. But we, we need to be, we need some more funding to do that, and that's just going to take time. But if we can get to three per truck, we can manage that effectively, and we can, we can do, we can continue the level of service that we have. The next hiring we would do, if we were to get the six, would, would be into the mainland station. That's where we would look at the, the, the big number for staffing. And so, each year, as I come back, since I've been here, I've, I need three. I need three. If we could get this six, I'm done for a little while. Our next planning would be the station and the staffing, and then we fill out the big picture.
Well, last year, you asked us for six positions.
Mm-hmm.
And we asked you if you could make do with three. And, and obviously, you make do with what you have.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming, obviously now, those three positional needs didn't go away.
No, they didn't go away. And because we have, we've, we've seen a 44% increase in calls since 2022, with a 33% increase in staffing. And so we're increasing in calls, and we have increased our level of service. Population is, is not dwindling. The visitors are not dwindling. And so with that, is yes, I've asked for three, three or six each year. And we have, just like I told you last year, I said, forward progression is forward progression. I would like to get to the point where I don't come in here every year and go, hey, I need some more. It's, and I've written this to where if we could get the six, I'm not going to come back next year and ask for three more unless something dramatically happens. We get a big building boom. Yeah, exactly. You know, we're, we're going to take a break for a little bit, and we're going to focus on the planning and building of that station when the time is right. That, that's the goal and objective right now overall, is we get this to where it's manageable. And, and I haven't worked for three months with one day off, including the weekends, because of trying to make sure my guys are taken care of, and the citizens in this town are taken care of. That's, that's the goal. And, and I don't want to back anyone to a corner and pour mouth in things, but to continue this level of service that we are providing, which I think is excellent, we got to have this. We, we need to move forward. And there's a lot of things built in this with, with fire tax and staffing and everything else, that, some big decisions. But we have a tremendous responsibility in this town, and I feel like a lot of time, the weight of that is right on my shoulders. When, when that fire call goes off, somebody needs us, and it can't wait till tomorrow, and they can't dial 912 either. So, I'll get off my horse.
So, you answered a Councilman Box question earlier.
Yes, sir.
The overtime is, is built into their pay structure.
Yes, sir. And so, just, just real quick, so.
Additional bodies would not lessen that, lessen that overtime?
No, sir. It, it's because of the, the, the labor laws, when you hire a firefighter, if you hire a firefighter in at $47,200, then they have about $4,500 in overtime, that because of the 24-hour shift schedule, they're going to be paid. And then you've got your holidays and everything else built on top of that, so.
And a question to Catherine or Helen. The proposed number requested in, in line 0220, does that allow for three additional hire?
No, sir.
Or half allows for zero? How is that just?
No new positions are.
It maintains our staffing level as current.
It, it is increased only because of the fire marshal and the drone movement from previous years, but no new staffing increases.
So you've, just, so this one additional level. So, the overtime that you're showing is for special events and also is part of their basic compensation package?
Yes, sir.
Then you have something called unscheduled overtime. You have more overtime.
Yes, sir.
What is that?
I, and so, at 6:00 in the morning, we get, we get a, a fire call. The guys typically, they're going to be there till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, getting cleaned up. The other shift comes in, you know, we, we make that transfer. And so, that happens. There's unscheduled time, just as, we're short this day. I need you to work over. That's unscheduled. We have an event pop-up that's like, oh, I got to put some staffing out there. That's unscheduled. We have a storm. We have a hurricane. We have a, you know, a thousand-year flood that comes through here. I need two shifts working today. All of that's unscheduled. And so that's built in for unplanned significant events.
That's a contingency fund.
It basically is. Yes, sir. It would be.
Because prototypically, when you look at a budget, you see a budget with this much overtime, it would raise a lot of flags, right?
Yes, sir.
But you're saying it's unique to firefighters and the way they're paid. They also have a big contingency. They're also moving costs from other former departments into yours. And I get all that. So the bottom line is, if you could live with two, Helen, what's the cost out? It's, what's the salary plus spendings? What are we talking about? I know it's not in here, but.
For, for an individual person?
Yeah.
So salary plus benefits is about $64,000 to $66,000 at an entry-level firefighter for one person. So if you just did round math, you could say $70,000 salary plus benefits for, for a firefighter.
That works. Round numbers for right now.
Yes, sir.
But to the point that you were on about all of this additional cost, because of the nature of, of the professional role in how their schedule works month to month, we did have a conversation, I can't remember, it was the very first budget workshop, where we talked about the kind of hidden costs every time the town sponsors some sort of social event, right? And I, I praised our staff and our committees for wanting to engage the community and to try to fill that social calendar. But at the same time, it would be great if we had some statistics that said, this event was well-attended, or this event was not as well-attended. And because if we can start driving more efficiency in the events that we offer as a social occasion to the community and the visitors, you also now help impact other departments within the town, not just staff that you see in this building. But, you know, as Lee said, every time an event pops up, he now has to make a decision. How many people go to that event? What apparatus needs to be on-site? And who's going to go do it? Because he can't really ask. I mean, he could, but it's not really fair to ask someone who just came off their shift and be like, oh, hey, wait, there's a art festival today, and we need a person there, right?
A lot of times, the events are covered on those small pop-up events, is the on-staff, is I'll just pull a truck down, or, or pull, if I have staffing that day, I'll pull one person off a truck, and myself, and we'll get on one of the UTVs and cover it. Myself or Chief Seillings will cover it. But the thing about if I pull an on-duty truck and cover that event, and they get two or three calls, they're not there at that event. And it's just like the Run Oak Island event. Brunswick County had one QRV unit there for 6,000 people. Myself and Chief Wagner were down there, and we stood by, you know, attended a couple people's bruises and scrapes and stuff like that. And that's the appropriate thing to do. Because you're always trying to prepare for that worst-case scenario.
We are to that point exactly. We have been revising the special events process, procedures, application, and have created a special events committee, which includes representatives from police and fire, rec, admin, because it is very costly and time-consuming on staff. We have day jobs, and then we have a huge amount of special events. Every great idea is a special event, and they just want to do it. But you're seeing the internal financial implications, as well as just productivity lost, because we can't get to our other things when we're planning for the next special event.
It's nice for the citizens to have all these fun activities, but it's costly to the town.
I think his duck example is perfect for that as well.
Well, and this is.
We pull them off smoothly, but underneath, we've prepared for months.
And this is the one thing that, at least this is my opinion and my attitude towards it. If that, we put 2,000 people in the park out there, and we do not prepare for it, and I don't have anybody standing by, and a significant event happens, somebody slips their foot off the brake and runs over two or three people, whatever, the question that's going to be asked to myself and Catherine, go, y'all had this event, and why weren't you prepared for it? They're not going to ask, what was the cost? They're not going to ask, oh, you know, it was just a, a, a big gathering. They're going to ask, why weren't you prepared? Because you knew about it. And so, it does, there's provided cost to that. And it's, with 150 events going on throughout the town in a year, and a lot of them are big events, we have to do something to insure. It's an insurance policy is what it is. You know, we pay insurance all the time, and nothing could ever happen. And you can say, well, that insurance is a waste of money, because I've never used it. But all it takes is one time.
So when there are community events, supported or sponsored by citizens, say, is there a permit process with that?
There is. That's that special event application process. They have to do it early. It goes through our review. We're just enhancing that process. They have an application fee, which covers a little bit of the administrative time. So, yes. And they have to estimate the number of attendees, they believe. They ask for road closures, police and fire.
And if I may, not to get too deep in the weeds, but in the committee, we have actually looked at that policy. And based on the number of attendees, there will be some stipulations. So if you have an expected 2,500 people, then they're going to have to pay for two EMTs to be on-site. Just an example. We are, we're, we're discussing that. And so, we don't have to absorb the cost of, we're going to need two guys out there because it's preventative measures. We're going to bill that to the event holder, because it is a safe practice, and it's going to be a requirement. Now, I'm not saying that's in policy right now, but that is discussions that we're having.
That's why I asked the question. And I, as an individual, I'm not sure what council would say. But if, if someone really is using, and I support these events wholeheartedly, and I've attended many of them. But when the gatherings are that large, and if we're trying to operate within a, within a budget, then we need to pass those costs on to those. And whether they're, they want to pass them again as participation fees or whatever, but it's time that we need to consider a policy where we can cover, cover our costs, and it doesn't fall under other duties as.
And we do have that draft written, and we have discussed it. And in fact, I think we have a meeting in the next week or two to, here it is, so.
And if by chance, they decided not to ask for a permit, no, I'm just playing devil's advocate, because I don't want our police and firemen to be attending these things if they haven't gone through the mechanism.
If there isn't a permit, the event shouldn't happen, in my opinion. But, because then we're just exposing our residents and our visitors to an unsafe situation. And, and whether, whether permitted or not, it's, and it happens and involves our east, you know, Oak Island Drive, or yacht, or beach, there's congestion there that affects everyone. So, again, I'm not wanting to dampen these types of events from happening. I just want to make sure that they happen safely, and that, you know, then it's up to the event sponsor to sell sponsorships, to raise the money, to make sure that they can do that safely, or charge, you know, participant fees, whatever it is that they need to do to get to zero on their budget. But I don't think it's right to impose that on, on the town.
Unfortunately, the vast majority of what we're talking about and the impact is self-inflicted. They are town events.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand.
Hundred fifty town events, concerts.
We're trying to get a handle on that, to your point of which ones are actually most beneficial. Can they be consolidated? Do they all need to occur every year? We're looking at all that, because 100-plus events is a lot.
I think of, like, more pop-up events, or, you know, like the witch's ride, or their lantern parade, that, you know, it's just a bunch of people.
Great idea.
Right? And there's no mechanism for them to, oh, we're going to, we have to figure out a way to come up with $25,000 or $50,000. And so that would certainly change that complexion a little bit of those types of events.
Like the mayor said, those pop-up events are.
I know.
We're sending six police officers.
I know.
Six firemen to be available.
And it's good for the, for our commercial businesses. So I, I don't want to, to put a dampen, you know, to, to put a damper on those things. But I, I just think they need to be managed, and the cost needs to be borne by something other than the town. That's my only suggestion. Sounds like you're on it.
Good conversation. Thank you.
Other questions?
So after you've had an opportunity to ask any of the operational line item questions, we have some large decisions that we want to use this opportunity, if we may, to have conversations regarding the additional positions, his ocean and beach services, the water rescue service, and the fee and tax discussion.
One item in here, capital outlay. So there was a significant request and a very significant reduction.
Okay, yeah. And so capital outlay, I, I requested, and we've, we've talked about this, is I had a, a new pickup truck for a replacement of a 2011 Explorer that I stole from the police department, not literally, but we needed another vehicle. So Charlie was gracious enough to give me one of his surplus vehicles, and we turned it into a admin vehicle for right now. But it's 140,000 miles. It may do. We needed a pickup truck. I put it in, and that was a discussion that we had, that it is a, it's a significant need. Chief Wagner, in fact, two days ago, took his personal vehicle to Ashborough, taking our SCBA bottles up there, because we need a pickup truck, and we didn't have anything available. And so, and he's, he's fine with doing that. He's very gracious, and he lives here on the island. He supports the town. He does a great job for us. But we need that truck for response, and for hauling their trailer around, and for hauling equipment and stuff like that. And so, I put it in. It was, it was removed. But yes, the, we've talked about that, and we do identify it as a need.
What's the command unit?
That was that thing from South Portland. Charlie and I talked about that. The command unit, Mayor, you remember last year at SOS, the, the town had barred the Brunswick County. So we have an opportunity, as long as it's still available, there's a, another municipality, another fire department that has a large command trailer. That would be very suitable for our needs, to have a mobile command post that we could utilize for events, we could utilize for storms and everything else. And that's a, a really good deal for that. They said they would sell it to us for, for that price. Charlie and I, Chief Morris and I, I'm sorry, Chief Morris and I have talked about it. It would be a great purchase for the town. It wouldn't be specifically for the fire department. I included it in mine, so that way we could have the conversations. It, it, as we do with a lot of things, Chief Morris and I partnership on a lot of items that we do, which is good for the town. And so, I put that in there as, as a, a point of discussion. So, yes.
And there's one more in there.
Yeah. And then the last, the last thing that was in there was something that I've had some conversations with, with, with some people about, and it's a marine firefighting unit, which transposes to a boat. Done some research. I've talked to some people, and we have over 1,250 docks on the intercoastal and through the canals and everything else with over 1,500 boats. We do not have a frequent amount of boat fires or dock fires, but it does happen. It does happen in this community. But besides that, well, let me, let me point on that one thing. If we have a boat fire, and I have to send people down a dock to go try to put that fire out, and the, the old joke is, well, it'll stop burning at the waterline. And the, the old joke is, well, it'll stop burning at the waterline. Well, yes, it will. But the environmental damage is one thing, you know, safety damage. If somebody's on that boat, what, what, there's a lot of factors in there. There's actually, you know, some, some standards that say if we're working above a water level, then you're required to have a SCIF for safety purposes to have, you know, in case somebody falls in the water. It is extremely dangerous to perform firefighting measures around the water. While your turnout gear will, will keep you afloat for a little bit. We did some testing. We threw a couple of guys in the pool. Once it gets saturated, you're going to the bottom, especially in SCBAs and everything else. So a safe method for extinguishing a boat fire, whatever, is from another boat. Between us and all the other agencies around here, there is only one marine firefighting unit. It's at Sunny Point. And if there's a boat in over there, we're not going to get it. We'd have to call Wilmington or Horry County. Brunswick County Sheriff's Office is getting a new boat in '26, '27 that will have a fire pump on it, but it's covering the entire Brunswick County. So while it would be available some, it might not. In doing a risk assessment of our town, this to me was a, a really good purchase, especially for the price. Because those boats, brand new, are about a million dollars. The particular one I found, they said they would sell us refurbished at 550,000 or we could get it as is, which is in decent shape for the 120. I actually have a marine mechanic on the department that is, was excited about that and could work on things. And I've got two or three that are really good boat operators and I've actually had my captain's license. And so it's, uh, it is an expansion that I put in there that I feel is a need. The biggest thing, as myself and other people have talked about, is that if we had an incident during a storm where we had a loss of water in our water system or if we needed additional water for places like the West End, is I could pump that boat from the intercoastal waterway and provide water for extinguishment on larger houses. Anything down the intercoastal, we could utilize it from the waterway and have an endless supply of water. Yes, that was put in there, but again, it's, it's one of those things that we discussed and it's, it's a conversation piece that I wanted to bring up. Yep, that was it on that.
Perfect.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So these are all high-ticket items, obviously. What, what is the potential for cost sharing with other communities? So, um, let's take the mobile command center, right? So with a, a large event, the mobile command center may be warranted. There are other communities that have large events that don't have these types of assets. Are there cost sharing opportunities for the purchase and the war for us to lease to other communities when they have these types of events to defer the cost? We may take the first capital outlay, but-
There are some, there are some cost sharing opportunities. I think it would be very district dependent. It would be kind of like going in to buy a car with your neighbor. Well, it, it sounds like it'd be a good idea and it would share the cost on some things. As then it comes down to who's going to maintain it. And if they bar it and break it, are they going to fix it or are they going to fix it like we want to? If it's, if we were to look at, it, I do understand the concept and I think it does have some value. But I don't know that on this particular item, it would be a, a... I do understand it. I'm not discrediting it at all. I think it would be a very difficult sell for one. Because if they, if they felt the need of a, of a unit like that, then they would probably be trying to do something to get it. So, yeah, I, again, not to discredit it at all. I think that's a, that's a tough conversation to have and to see if anyone's interested for one. If they have the need in their community for two. And that could be with anything, whether it be the boat or the mobile command center or whatever, so.
But if it were, if someone has two events a year where a mobile command center might be warranted, I don't know that it would warrant a purchase of a mobile command center. However, what I would hope we wouldn't get in the situation of doing is have that fall under mutual aid where we're bearing the full cost of something where we might be able to defray that cost by making it available to other communities.
Understand completely.
So we own it.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Got you.
Chief, what contracted services do you have?
All right. So, and that list is pretty long. Everything from ground letter testing to pump testing, stair chair maintenance, which, you know, we move people up down the stairs with. Our SCBA compressor, compressor testing, the, the testing on the SCBAs. Copy service, elevator service, climb event, which is the exhaust tubes that go in the fire station. You know, it hooks up so that way we don't fill the fire station up with, with exhaust. Our firefighter physicals, that's the big one. Everyone gets a physical. Everyone gets an annual physical. So, you know, we put through all the new hires. Everyone gets a physical every year. Biohazard service for the EMS part of things, generator maintenance on the apparatus. Town DFIB maintenance, we take care of all the DFIBs in the town. So that's a pretty big item too. So they have to be maintained annually and there's contracts with that.
It's mostly equipment related stuff that has to be recertified.
Yes. And, and, yeah, most all of that is, is one of those is that you shall do this.
If I asked last year about volunteer firefighters and we had a little discussion about that and we kind of moved on past, I'd like to bring that up again. Is that something that, you know, you feel that there could be merit to it?
I come from a volunteer. That's how I started as a volunteer firefighter. There is merit to that. With us, would I, would I consider a volunteer pro, let me, let me start over. Would I look at reintroducing, enhancing a volunteer program at the department? Yes, but Chief Seelins and I have talked about this quite a bit. We have a set of standards that we keep for our firefighters. And typically in the past, they keep those. So if you were a volunteer, you maintain the same level of service that we did. Physicals, you know, being able to do the job and stuff like that. While I do not discount any, we would love to have a strong volunteer base. If you put 10 volunteers on the department, I will tell you that you might get three that's going to respond normally. And then the qualifications of those three is what exactly is that going to be contributing to the department? That's just the facts and reality of it. We have not, since I've been here, we've had two or three people come and want to volunteer. And we get one. He came and he wanted to take some classes and it just didn't work out. A lot of times you get guys that want to come volunteer that, uh, can't volunteer anywhere else, so you don't put them on. There's reasons for that. And then you have people that retire and come down here and they, you know, it's still in my blood and I want to do this. Well, they're fully certified and everything else. And if somebody came on, Chief Seelins and I were talking about this just the other day. We do have volunteer spots available. And if we had somebody come down that had their certifications that we could put on the truck and, and have a good return on that investment for them, because it does cost money for a volunteer, then yes, we would put them on. But we, we don't have the demographics nor the population for a good, strong volunteer base here like other departments in Brunswick County may have. And the decline in volunteer numbers are being seen everywhere. We even heard the other day that there are some departments here that are all volunteer that are looking at if they do a new station, they're going to put paid staff in it. I was at a station yesterday up in Nevada and he has paid staff during the day and volunteers at night. And so, you know, most, all of your volunteer stations now, with the exception of only one that I know of, have some sort of paid supplemental staff in it. Because the volunteer numbers are just so dramatically lower because of the requirements. And when we talk about staffing, the new OSHA standard is going to put even more of a damper on that. And so, yeah, it's a great idea and I would, I would love to entertain it. But it's, the practicality for us is limited. Now, I will tell you this. My aspect has always been, since I've been in the fire service, there's a place for everybody. So if you wanted to come volunteer with us and you weren't a certified firefighter and we had a decent volunteer program, I mean, you could direct traffic if we had a car wreck or you could do rehab, you know, something like that. And that is a crucial thing. If we're at a fire, we need somebody to set up the coals and do rehab, maybe take a blood pressure or two, but we just don't, we don't have people that are actively pursuing that. Unfortunately, but that's, that's-
Who would issue a call for volunteers? Like just maybe, what if we do a campaign through the current or something? You know, you do a two-month campaign and see what kind of responses. Not necessarily for firefighters, but to augment, to fill in, whether it's fire, police, help direct traffic, help, you know, whatever it might be.
And so in, in the logistical things that we run into with volunteers is that we would, we would not allow the volunteer to leave their house and run to the fire station because the trucks are already going to be gone. So they would need to pull a duty shift. We would need the volunteer, we would need somebody to coordinate the volunteer program. So I either would have to task that to one of the admin people or we'd have to have somebody else that would, would coordinate a volunteer program. I couldn't really do that with a shift person because they work 10 days a month, 24 hours a day. So it would need to be somebody kind of in admin. Then we have the cost of each volunteer we put on, we've got to, we've got to supply them with uniforms. So you can figure each volunteer we put on is going to cost $11,000 right off the bat. Because that's what it takes to outfit one person.
Turnout gear.
Yeah, turnout gear and everything.
We've had, we have had discussions about some things such as the lift assists and things like that. I don't know if you want to share, because we, he takes a lot of calls where-
We pick up and put down a lot of people.
Pick up someone that fell. That doesn't require a firefighter, but we send a firefighter and a fire truck. Is that a potential?
Absolutely.
Yes, and, and we could look at some programs like that. I could definitely look at some, um, use it more as a, more as a fire prevention and public safety education volunteer position. I will tell you that two of our fire investigators are volunteers here with, with us. We do have two. They're fire investigators, so we're very fortunate in that. But we could look at that. If there was some EMTs that wanted to come and volunteer and we could put them on a truck and they could respond, we could look at something like that. There is costing occurred when you do volunteer programs, but no, it's not as much as a full-time person. That being said, that if we did add any volunteers, it would not discount any of what we're doing or what we need to do to move forward. It would just be an enhancement to the service. So if we had a, a group of volunteers come in, it would enhance the job that we're already doing. It wouldn't reduce any of the needs that we currently have. Yeah.
I mean, I think with our aging population that we have here, you know, people come down, they retire for a full-time job and then they, there's only so much golf and pickleball they can play. And then they kind of go, okay, what's next for me? And this may be an opportunity for people to put in a couple of hours to help out.
I like it. I can explore that.
Yeah, good luck in that.
Thank you.
Any other budget?
Are, are we going to top fire tax, fire fee?
Yeah, that was, that's-
Wanted to make sure we're done with the budget first.
Anything else on the budget itself? Chief, it's all yours.
All right, um. So at my end-of-year report, I, I approached the topic of the fire fee to the fire tax. And then we had it in new business at, at the last session. We've had a lot of discussions on it. Catherine and I have talked extensively on this. And we actually, we had our fire fee meeting yesterday. Yes, that's right.
Seems like two days ago.
And so we had a really great discussion during our fire fee meeting about that. And I still wholeheartedly feel that this is the way to go is to establish the fire tax. I want to say since, and I've said this numerous times, this is not an additional tax. In fact, we found out yesterday that if we go to a fire tax and establish the fire tax district of Oak Island, that the fire fee would be set to zero and cannot, in legislation, you know, be, be used.
Can't be reestablished.
Right, can't be reestablished. So if we had the fire tax, the fee's to zero. So this is a replacement funding, basically. I know we talked numbers very briefly the other day when we had our, our meeting on what our budget is and what the numbers would be. Based on some calculations that we have discussed preliminarily is that if we established a fire tax for Oak Island, the rate neutral would be about 6.9 right at seven cents. And that would accommodate the budget that it stands right now with no additional staffing, no additional, you know, resources. So if we establish the fire tax based on the budget, as admins recommended, it would be seven cents. If we added, um, if we added three people, add half a cent. If we add six people, add one cent.
So could you, for the public's sake who might be watching this, talk about the concept of rate neutral? The idea of a fire fee plus what we supplement with the general fund? That may not be obvious to everyone.
So basically, what, what's happening is that our fire, um, our fire fees contribute about $2.8 million at 100% collection rate. And so you have to back that down to about 98%. So let's just use $2.8 million from that. And so the, um, the remaining balance is absorbed by the general fund. And so what this would do is that this would establish one rate to fund the fire department at that, under $4.9 million would be that rate. And so seven cents establishes that. And then there's no more. We get a little money here. We get a little money here. We put it all together.
So the drawdown on the general fund no longer is required? Catherine, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and the fire fee just simply goes away?
Correct.
Yes.
And what are we supplementing with the general fund right now approximately?
About $2 million.
Okay.
Is that right?
2.76.
There you go.
Thank you. Just to clarify that people, we're not double dipping here.
Right, no, it is not double dipping. It is a alternative funding revenue. Those numbers are a little off than what we've got, I've got there. Because when I did those slides three weeks ago, we adjusted some things. So they're close. They're not exact.
So I see some of the benefits of being that there's, uh, there's more transparency, if you will, right? With, um, not drawing from two different funds and people wondering to know why they're paying twice, so to speak, to come up with what it takes to operate our fire services and, and EMS. But it's all under one umbrella with one fund that we basically control year in, year out based on-
Yes, and it can fluctuate independently from the general fund. And so is that if the general fund is, is good that year, but the fire department needed a little bit extra, then we would adjust the fire tax rate. If the fire department's good that year and we see, you know, we, our assumptions is that we use, let's just say we use a 1% assumption in value increase that gives us a, a better ability to do planning. You know, I've, I've run my assumptions all the way through 2040 with the build of a new station, new hiring and everything else. And so I could tell you in 2040 what the fire tax rate would be, um, that kind of thing. So planning, it makes it much cleaner. Transparency, it makes it much cleaner. It's, there's a lot of tremendous advantages to having the fire tax and, and being able to make the assumptions and make plans. It's a lot easier for us.
And it's also directly related to growth.
It's directly related to growth, whether that be growth in a resident or growth is you bought three more vehicles or you bought a boat or you bought an airplane. Yeah.
So you're saying if you establish a 7.5 fire tax, you could possibly hire three more people. But at any time you wanted new fire trucks or new fire station, you would then just up the fire tax to 10 cents or 11 cents.
So what we would do in that, so if we, let's say that, that we establish 7.5, we hire three people at 7.5. If, let's say we need to buy a new truck, we would come back with what the financing rate would be for that. And then the fire tax would increase just as the general fund would have to increase proportionally to what that payment would be. We have a ceiling of 10 cents before we have to get, I guess, legislative approval before we can exceed 10 cent to 15 cents. So I will tell you that in, in building, let's just say that as things stand today, if we built a station for and we hired all the staff and everything else, in seven years, we might exceed that. But we also have reevaluations that we have to consider in there too. And so in my forecasting, that's why I do that, is if we're- is if we're at seven and a half this year, we're at eight, and then we're seven and a half this year, however the, the, the revenues come in, we're going to have that 10 cent ceiling. Without considering reevaluations, we don't hit the 10 cent ceiling for another five, six, seven years.
Right now, what's the fire fee?
The fire fee is based on heated square footage of a house. And so that heated square footage of the house is, and it, it was originally set to pay for the fire service, not all-encompassing emergency services. So it doesn't pay for that car wreck or that vehicle fire or anywhere else, and all these services that we're providing. And so the fire fee is based on a set rate of square footage. So like 1,000 to 2,000 square foot, $400, and it goes up from there. The problem with that is that if you have limited building, if you only have a percent or a percent and a half of growth, and the square footage isn't, is smaller, then your revenue is limited. So if you have three 2,000 square foot houses built, you have this much revenue. If you have three, 4,000 square foot houses, you have this much revenue. And so the revenue is largely dependent on the size houses and largely dependent on the houses that are built.
For the fire fee?
For the fire fee. For the fire tax, it's based on, you know, property values, which is very simple. It's, it's worth this, times this amount, that's your money.
So, so I ran numbers just for my house based on the county's assessment, and I figured it at eight cents, which gets you six personnel. And for me, on my property, it would go up about $135 a year.
He ran it on me, too.
Yeah.
It was right at $100 increase a year.
But that is until there was been a need for a new fire station, and then it goes up another.
Right, but if, if we needed a new fire station, and the fire fees, a 2% increase in fire fees contributes about $56,000. A 2% increase in ad valorem tax goes up $200,000. Okay? So if we need a new fire station, as it sits today, and we don't change anything, next year we're going to build a fire station, four and a half million dollars, you've got to go up on property tax.
It's going to have to come out of there because the fire fees are maxed.
So it's you either pay it from here or you pay it from here. It's one way or the other. It's, it's, one of them would have to go up to increase a fire station, increase apparatus or whatever. What the plan, in, in looking at plans, and this is, I'm big on spreadsheets and plans, as Catherine knows, I say this all the time, is that I can plan, if it's a tax, if I get a 1% assumption of increase in property values each year, then I won't go buy my fire truck here because I can't do that with fire fees. We only have, what, 4% left to build on the island, then we've got the mainland side. And if, if the building only increases, if we only go up with 1% of houses each year, we're not going to see a tremendous increase in fire fees. This year it was $51,000, that was it. So again, we talk about, there's a lot of building in Brunswick County, there sure is, but it's not a tremendous amount in Oak Island.
So here, so the difference between fire fee and fire tax for the vast majority of homeowners will be inconsequential?
On average, yes.
So where it changes, where you've got...
There'll be some ups and some downs, but...
Some of the beachfront homes, you could see they could, their tax could be significantly greater.
It is a direct...
The assessed value.
House size versus property value. So if you have a 3,000 square foot house on the beaches worth $1.8 million, you might see an $84 increase, or you might see a $150 increase. So I, I ran Mark's house, it was a $64 increase on his house. I ran one of the beachfront homes, and it was actually a $34 decrease, because it was a larger house that's already paying, you know, a little bit elevated. So commercial businesses, it is the same way. If you have a commercial business that's 29,000 square foot, that's just below the threshold of that, of the next step in fire fees. But that business is worth $8 million. And so, you know, they, and that's the thing. So commercials could see a little bit on...
29,000 square feet, commercial buildings in Oak Island.
Grocery store. We have 100, we have six 100,000 square foot buildings, technically. Yeah. It doesn't seem that way, but it, the grocery stores typically between 25,000 and 35,000 square foot.
John?
Well, I, yes, planning certainly is facilitated by having a tax and a revenue stream. And, and certainly transparence, because right now, we're transferring money out of the general fund, we're subsidizing it, so you don't see that. But the danger here is unless future councils are really cost conscientious, you know, this creeps forward, and we start getting things that are nice to have but not essential to have. And there's a 10%, 10 cent cap on it?
10 cent cap, yes, sir.
You know, that could change. So too, could reval change the value of the houses. So it's not as simple as it sounds. Right now, you're set to, to neutral. You're going to see some minor variation, but eventually, as you operate this tax going forward, you could have some wild swings, especially if you're building a station, especially if Williamson takes off, you know.
No, no different than the general fund could see that also, because if, if we're building the station, the money's got to come from somewhere. And so then you add it to, to this one instead of this. Yes, sir, I understand.
But in the current model, which we're seemingly about to abandon, right, because a considerable portion of that would come out of the general fund, and people would see their taxes go up, right, opposed to the fire taxes, I assume will be incorporated, it's just easier to build a bigger, better station. Right?
Well, the thought could be there, but yes, we're, we're...
As, as opposed to what you actually need, so.
Yeah. And, and what I hope, I understand that completely, is that if, if you have a, a revenue stream that you could get from, doesn't mean that, and as I said earlier, it doesn't mean that you need to go flashy and big. You need to use the taxpayers' money appropriately and wisely, so that way they're getting the best bang for their buck. And whether it's this council or future councils, or this fire chief or future fire chiefs, I hope that everyone would take that into consideration when they're planning. You know, big and fancy does not put out fires. Nice equipment does, and when it looks good, that's even a bonus. It, it doesn't cost anymore to make it look good and be very functional. And so building a big Taj Mahal fire station, that, that's, there's no advantage to that. Build something that is prudent and useful. And, and I'm hoping that...
Agreed. I'm just pointing out some of the...
Completely understand, yes, sir.
...risk here, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm very confident you wouldn't build the Taj Mahal, but who knows?
Love to, but not going to.
We don't, we don't know.
Right.
That now will shift the responsibility back to council in a very different way and management in a different way. And for the time being, there's going to be a lot, a lot more generous resource base, but that could change.
Yes.
And it is going to redistribute what people pay. So some people are going to say, ah, it's de minimis, it went up $60. Some people are going to get hit with more.
Yes.
And they're going to go, whoa, where'd this come from?
It does provide a more equitable distribution of, so a person with a 2,000 square foot house on the beach that's worth $2 million pays the same fire fee as a person with a 2,000 square foot house in the wooded area that might only be worth $500,000. And so your risk on the beach is much greater. You would have to have more resources. It costs more money to fight that fire than it does this one, but yet they're paying the same rate. And so it does provide a more equitable means across the board of, you know...
I'd like to see some breakdowns on what average Joe pays now, and what average Joe would pay with that.
So he's run a lot of those scenarios and even built a model where you can plug in your numbers and it calculates it.
Might not be in this book.
I mean, it makes sense if you have a $2 million home, or if you have a $500,000 home, there ought to be something different. But I just want to see the, the pain, where the, where the pain falls.
Well, if he found it, then...
Right, right now, land, vacant land, has zero square foot of structure. So they're not paying a fire fee. Under an ad valorem structure, they would pay, pay based on the value of their land. I think that's where you'd see some of the increase.
So here's an example right here I've got. So a oceanfront home, 3,119 square foot with a value of $1.358 million pays a fire fee revenue of $600. In the new tax, it would be $865. But if we're not funding $2 million out of the general fund, there's an offset there.
That's the second step, is there would be a decrease in your general fund tax rate.
So that particular house saves $6.36.
So then when you put them together, that's correct. That's if you went in that direction. If you wanted to stay completely rate neutral, then you're looking at the $2 million supplement being two to three cent tax decrease.
And that's, that's where, that's where my question was, is walk me through the execution of the transition. Because when you say 7 cent fire tax, people, not just us, but the public, need to understand that that 2.8 million fire services fee is actually like four cents.
Four and a half cents.
Tax.
That's what I was trying to find out.
And then the balance of that seven cents is what is in the general fund. If you're going to execute this neutral, then that two and a half cent needs to be deducted from the 13 cent. So people will see a 7 cent fire tax fee, but now they will see 11 and a half...
Yes.
Ad valorem fee, and then of course, the three cent sand tax. And so, so that's where the revenue neutral comes in, because you, now we will move the transfer from the general fund, and it will be established in this fire tax.
So basically, what it is, is when you get your total budget out of the general fund, it's reduced by the $2 million because that's being funded by the fire tax. And when you do your math calculation at the one cent, you take the $2 million out, it's, what, 2.46, whatever it is, two and a half cent reduction. So instead of it being a 16 and eight cent, if we did that, it would be a 14 and eight cent. So you're actually reducing one, creating the other. That's where your offset comes.
The, the calculator that you've built, is that something you can share with us?
Yes.
To look at different, we can look at our own different scenarios. And, because it's, it's going to be, because we need to be crystal clear with this, with our constituents, because they're all going to see, you're going to raise my taxes, and it's like, net-net, we're not.
There are going to be, and, and, Bock, you and I have talked about this before, there will be some that see an increase, there will be some that see a decrease. And overall, in average, we talked about averages, it pretty much flattens out. But there are...
Bock, we threw how it flattens out. That's what I don't understand. If we're going from a four and a, 4%, 4 cent fire fee, and we're going to a 7 and a half cent fire tax, how does that, how does that balance out?
Could you decrease the general fund tax rate?
General fund ad valorem.
You're not paying 13 cents.
I'm not paying 13, so I'm paying 11.
11.
So my 11 that I'm paying, I used to pay four and a half.
Or 11.
I, I saved two, so it shoots that up to six and a half, so.
Right, we, yes, sir.
Just like...
So maybe Terry is accurate when she said $60 a year.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I think mine would not be as much as I said it would be because I didn't...
You did it based completely on that.
2%, 2 cents.
She didn't compensate for the deep concern.
That's right. Yes, yes, ma'am, yeah.
To go forward and to accomplish things, you, I mean, nobody likes to raise taxes, nobody likes to say, I raise taxes. But somewhere along the way, you need to buy stuff, you need to do things. But the more I, I just need to get educated on this.
Well, just, so remember a couple of years ago, when the county did evaluation, and Oak Island got hit with, on average, I think, an 83% increase in property values. So we elected as town council to try to go net neutral. We had this discussion for hours at that period in time, because the word net neutral on tax and revenue is so difficult to get to. Remember, we, we were like, well, we can go from 25 down to 13, but that means some people, even at 13, paid a little bit more, and some people paid a little, like on, on Tammy's and mine house, when we did the, the adjustment for the valuation, we actually paid less. The 13 cent equaled a few dollars savings on our house, but it probably equaled a few dollars more for somebody else. So it's always difficult to have this net neutral conversation, because there is no net neutral, right? Because we all have individual...
The magic formula.
Right, we all have individual property, you know, values, right, based on a lot of different variables that are outside of the parameters of what this town council can control. So now we're going to be faced with a very similar exercise. It's a one-time transition, right? But then, once we get there, the fire department will have actually a better vehicle for forecasting in the future based on growth and based on the timing of the next valuation, which will come. Brunswick County, I think, is on an eight-year cycle, they said. But I think they can pull the trigger whenever they want to do a valuation. So, but you've got to take into effect, new homes come online, that's more revenue for the fire department, right? Based on the value of the home, not the square footage of the home, just like Lee was saying. Today, vacant property, unimproved property pays $0, right?
20 bucks.
20 bucks. So...
I think it is, yeah.
You know, tomorrow, that unimproved property will actually help contribute to the growth of what we're experiencing.
$300,000 lot.
Because they, even though it's unimproved, it, they benefit from the growth, that unimproved lot. The lot right down the street from me just sold for three times the amount of what our lot is valued at, just the unimproved lot. So they are benefiting from the growth in, in, in the amenities and services. So yes, people, it will balance out. It will equate to people paying more of what their share is for fire services. And, and other people, like they said, they'll see a savings, some will see a slight increase. You know, I think Lee said he ran the numbers on, on the Tammy's and mine property, it was like $60 more, right? Because of the, yep, here's the fire tax, but now we're going to save in, in ad valorem general fund tax, so the net-net is $60. I don't have a problem paying $60 to help the fire department out. I really don't, right? I'm an advocate for public safety. So...
So the 16 cents, without holding you to it, what would you see that potentially dropping to from a revenue neutral perspective incorporating a fire tax?
Depends on how high we set the fire tax. So if it encompasses the, all the additional capital and personnel requested, it would take a very substantial decrease in the general fund tax, which I would not be sitting here recommending, because then you're going to be cutting other things. You're still competing with the fire department needs. It's not some free revenue source. It is still the trade-off. The movement from the structure of fee to tax, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of. But where we set that number, I think you would love it to be eight. But that would mean such a substantial reduction in the general fund side that I wouldn't recommend that. So it's somewhere in that, slightly above where he is now.
So one more reservation. I'd, I hate every time the fire department has, has a need for something, we come back to the council and say, now I want to raise the fire tax again. I mean, that needs to be a very guarded number.
But this is something else that we could do. It does need to be a guarded number, just as the general fund tax rate is a guarded number. If both of them are guarded, guarded by this group right here. But this is something that we can do also in forecasting and planning, because it cleans things up so much. This is my forecast at a fire tax through 2040. And so I've taken this, and this also includes the building with payments and everything else for a new station, a new truck, and the personnel. Is I can tell you that in doing this forecasting, and if I really dove deep, this was, this was a quick one. If I dove deep, I could say that we need to be at eight cent this year to get this, this, and this level of service. This year, we don't need to increase, because I've got a 1% assumption of value increase for here. This year, I might need a half cent increase, because I need to add this, and the cost of this is going up, and I need a new pickup truck for this station. This year, because we saw a growth last year, we can decrease that half cent. And so I can forecast things a lot better. And based on this, again, this was like, you know, shoot from the hip, we wouldn't even touch that 10 cent mark until we got into the 31, 32 timeframe of year. We'll have a reevaluation done by then. And I also have in here trending where it goes up, like 1.2, comes down 0.12. So I've got a lot of trends, and I've got a lot of forecasting right here. I've also broken it out where you can look at when capital expenses go away. So when we get the, the two... we get the, the two trucks paid for, we got a ladder truck on order, we'll have to do that, there'll be an adjustment for that. The ladder truck payment is probably not gonna be quite as high as what the two trucks were, so we'll see an adjustment. So, we might be able to go down a quarter cent right there, because if you look at this, and again, these numbers, we've been adjusting numbers for the past two weeks, getting all this straight, but if we're at eight cents on the fire, on the tax rate, let's just say that's, one cent of it is to capital, and the rest of it's to opera, well, like, two cents is operations, and four and a half cents is to personnel. I've actually got it broken down that far. If the capital drops off, then, then, if it's not needed for operations or personnel, that reduces the tax rate. So, once we get apparatus paid for, the tax rate goes down.
I think Mark's, Mark made a good point. I hate to put this four cents to the ground, but we need to be really crystal in the doubt of this tax that we're imposing, because it's a better model, it's more transparent, it's more equitable, blah, blah, blah. And some will go up, and some will go down, we've all been through the reeval.
Yes, sir.
But there'll be a decrease in the general fund contribution.
Yes, sir.
If it subsidizes. Stop and sentence, because everyone's gonna get a different number, right?
Very, very valid point, yes.
Last time everybody freaked out. They, they're yelling at us, it's the county that didn't get the net neutral, right? We came within decimal points of it. So, it's gonna be the same thing, but people will get over it, and it will distribute itself based on the value of your house, as opposed to the square footage. That's the story.
Not just the value of the house, the value of your property. So, we respond to fires that are beyond resident. We've responded to everything that's on that property, including brush fires that are not covered in the budget currently. Those are like freebies, because they, we have a fire fee. The other thing is, and don't sell yourselves or future council short, the same body that will control the level of fire tax is the same one that controls the ad valorem tax. So, whatever their mindset is, and let's say we stay with fire fees, which is already capped, there is no more. So, whatever it is that we wanna provide to the fire department, and what they can justify, we have an in, an increase in ad valorem tax to cover that. So, I wouldn't get too upset at, well, we're asking for seven cents now, but in ten years, it might go to eight, and maybe go to ten, right? Well, that, that, if we're giving them the equipment, or a building, or whatever it is we're giving them, that increase would happen to the ad valorem tax. So, it's not as if, ooh, this is an addition, no. If we wanted the fire department to have those things, we're gonna have to increase the general fund, the ad valorem tax. So, it's not, it shouldn't be as scary as we're talking about. And it's all within council's control. So, as long as we keep electing fiscally conservative, responsible council members, then this shouldn't be as scary a change as maybe it seems at the moment.
And it's, it's the exact same conversation that we have every year, within the general fund ad valorem tax. How much growth did we truly see? Did we built in a two percent growth factor, but now, we're only operating at a one? So, the fire department's gonna do the exact same thing, right? And so, as the tax base grows, the funds to provide fire services grows with the tax base, the exact same way we manage our services as a town, our ad valorem general fund, whether we change the rate or not, we get additional revenue year over year, because the tax base grows. And to your point, fiscal conservative policy starts with protecting your tax base. If you have zero tax base, you have no choice but to drive revenue through higher tax rates. So, a healthy, strong tax base is what affords us the luxury to sit here and have this conversation we're having today, right? We can sit here, year over year, and say, "We're gonna be net neutral," and again, that's a slippery term to use, but that's our goal as a governing body, and it, we can do that, because even though we only saw maybe a one percent growth, it was still a one percent growth. It's gonna drive additional revenue to help us keep growing with that, that growth that we see in the tax base. So, that's, that's why this is a, clearly a better model, because as we've said, time and time again, we're done with fire service fees, we're, we're tapped out. So, yes, you add a new home, but it's only added, I think Lee said, that we only added fifty thousand dollars in fire services fee, year over year, versus if that was a, based on a tax base, an ad valorem tax, we likely would have seen a two hundred thousand dollar increase to help go toward a new apparatus, or onboarding three people, or whatever we need to service the area, right?
So, the other thing that this affords us the opportunity to do, is it puts this decision in a timeframe that is within this council's control. So, this discussion is also happening at the county level. So, if the county decides to move from fire fee to fire tax, we're moving to fire tax, guys, whether we like it or not, and it just won't be as coordinated as, that's not the word, as efficient and effective, based on all of the numbers that the chief has brought us this morning. So, we could be forced into this situation, or we can do this within our own timeframe, and within our, our own parameters, that we may not have the affordance to do if we leave this to the timing of the county. Just another consideration.
We can establish our future, or someone else will establish it for us.
Exactly.
Yeah, because that's exactly what happened to where I came from, and I was on town council. The county, all of a sudden, said, "Hey, we got this amazing idea, instead of a service fee, fire fee, we're gonna go to a fire tax, and we're gonna set the rate." And so, I spoke up on town council where we were, and I'm like, "Huh, this is a bad idea. Why, I don't want the county establishing the fire tax rate for our little municipal government, you know, we just, we just lose control now."
We do.
And so, we made this, we did this exact transition in the town of Harrisburg. When I was there, we went from a services fee revenue stream to a fire tax that showed up on the bill. But we, year one, it was, you know, it was just a transition over. But then, that gave us the forecasting, the projections, the ability to manage our own fire services within our municipal district, and it worked out great.
So, we can either be our own fire tax, or we can be district, or we can be part of someone else's fire tax district, where we don't get to make those calls.
That's correct.
And so, that's one consideration. And in terms of, are we behind, or in front, or even with the eight ball? We had this discussion yesterday at the, the fire meeting with our commissioner, Pat Sykes. So, how many counties within the state of North Carolina have, are still with fire fees?
None.
Just Brunswick.
Yep. Everyone else has switched to some other funding, funding system, whether it be a fire tax, fire service district, or whatever.
Just like everything else that we, Bob, you tried to talk two or three times, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just saying, in the essence of time, it's twelve fifty, just doing a quick time check.
Oh, okay.
I got to wrap up at one. So, what do we do right now to move forward?
So, we're, again, this is the third time that we're trying to have it in, before you, and have a healthy discussion on it. What we would like to do is have it one more time. Next Tuesday is your final budget work session. We had a placeholder for April thirtieth that I hope we will not need. I've heard some other folks say that they're not gonna be able to be there, myself included. So, hopefully, next Tuesday, we can wrap this up. That gives you an additional time between now and then. Feel free to ask us any questions. We'll continue to run some scenarios and provide some more hard copies of information.
How about we get a copy of what Lee said? He could, would be great.
He's gonna send that for you.
I'll update some numbers and stuff with, with the current numbers, because I, I've been working on this for six months, and so, some of my numbers are four months old, some of them are two months old. I'll update current numbers and send some things to you, as well as the, the Excel thing that I've created.
With the lower ad valorem tax.
Yep, we'll, we'll work on a visual of the changes for next Tuesday, so you don't have to make any decisions today. What, if I may, a minute on next week, you have gone through all of the departments now. If you have any additional questions, feel free to shoot them to myself or Helen, we'll try to get any of those answered before next Tuesday. On the agenda will be the capital projects discussions, the ones, particularly the recreation center, we do need some guidance on direction moving forward there. Of course, beach nourishment, I'm sure you wanna spend some time on that, that's a, with the room occupancy tax fund, that is a forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven, three different funds. I'll, I'll bring that forward to open up to revenues. If you have any revenue questions, we can address those next Tuesday. And then, finally, I'd like to make sure we have time to do additional prioritization process at the end. As you've seen, we've done some tweaking along the way, some decreases, some you may say you really wanna see us try to put back in. You've had the opportunity to hear all of the requests, so we wanna give you that opportunity. In combining that discussion with the strategic plan, remember, all of these departments built their budget, understanding what the strategic plan priorities were. They're integrally linked. If we move forward with this budget, that sets the strategic plan in place, so any final tweaks to that, please shoot them to us, or bring them forward Tuesday, because we don't wanna pass a budget that says money's going to this, and then you change that out of your strategic plan. They have to work together cohesively, so we'll save time Tuesday to go through that final prioritization exercise.
So, we've got the June town council meeting, we present the budget to the town.
We'll present it to you in May. Then, we have built in this year, an additional meeting of council for public hearing on the budget.
So, you're asking us to wrap it all up, and, and vote on a final budget this coming Tuesday?
No, sir.
Good.
May, will, May, you'll hear it, we'll present it officially, after all the feedback from these work sessions. By state law, you have to have an opportunity for a public hearing, we've scheduled that, Lisa will help me with the date.
Twenty-two.
And then, you have an opportunity to actually vote on the budget at the June council meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Can we take these? Are we at a point where they won't change, so that we can review?
There's a lot of number changes in there. I, I can't prevent you from taking them, but I would just say they're all draft numbers.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you very much.
Great conversation.
Thank you, Chief.
By the way, just to confirm, the net neutral, six point nine seven, wherever you're rounding that up, does that include the two additional, if that's-
Seven cents would get us to where we are right now.
It's net neutral, I got you.
We need seven and a half to get to three.
And eight to get to six.
Okay.
Seven and a half to get to three.
Thirty seconds of, of, of one final thing, because we were gonna talk about the staffing real quick, is not, not to push anything, but we do have OSHA stuff that is probably gonna be coming out in the next twelve to eighteen months, that's gonna impact that also. We're getting ahead of the game if we do that, but that's not the reason we're doing this. We're doing this for other reasons, and it's the level of service, and to try to get some relief, so. We can, we can discuss more of that at later times, I do have more information, and anything that y'all wanna ask, we can go to Catherine, and I'll get you some answers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Great conversation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Uh.
To adjourn?
So, moving.
Is there a second? All in favor? It's unanimous.